Okay, members of council, if I can please have you take your seats. This meeting is now resumed. Members, before the recess, council was asking questions of staff on item EX 31.1 on the 2018 property tax rate and related matters. We will not return to that item. If we could now put this list on the screen. Counselor Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wondered if through you to staff specifically, I think the CFO, if someone could help me understand the cost of the recommendation related to the creative tax subclass, where I understand that there's, we're giving essentially a 30% discount for a specific category of taxpayer.
Yes, thank you for the question through the speaker. We've identified for you the implications of providing that 30% discount, and we've estimated it to be in the order of about $1.2 million.
Okay. How is eligibility determined for that?
So, I'm going to suggest that either Mike Santima or the, Mike Williams respond to that because they have authority over the tax design.
Okay. Can you just hold my time for a quick sec?
Through the chair, I can start. Actually, there are criteria that are included in this report similar to a municipal capital facility. Properties will be reviewed against the criteria and will come to council for approval for inclusion in the class.
Do we have other mechanisms which the, these same property tax holders might be offered some protection or shelter? I know, I'll take note, council just passed a 10% cap on movements on property tax increases. I think that's the genesis of this. There's some, there's a select area that's increasing some very aggressive changes in their taxes, and they're looking for some shelter on that.
Through the chair, certainly everyone is, gets protection from capping, and those that are charitable organizations also get the charitable rebate.
Okay. I think this is to Mr. Williams or some of the staff from that area. I'm going to assume that a lot of the organizations that would be eligible for the creative class tax shelter would also be grant recipients or in some way related with city programs that provide funding.
That is correct.
So, could you explain to me how the benefit of a tax cap gets incorporated into their financial statements, their grant evaluation, and the city's understanding of their financial position?
Through the chair, the eligible applicant to this tax class will actually be property owners, so in many cases will not be recipients of grants. Their tenants who determine their eligibility may themselves be recipients of grants. The property owners themselves will be assessed based on their eligibility to be providing certain services the city seeks to incent, co-location of creative enterprises, offering below-market rent, and public programming.
So, how do we know that the savings and taxes get passed on to the, ultimately the programs as opposed to being caught up with the landlords? And if you recall, that was part of the discussion we had at council when we were talking about the 10% backstops, if you will, on property tax increases.
There's a number of obligations that are put on to eligible applicants for this to ensure that the savings are passed on effectively to the public. The first is that the majority of their tenants will have to be on below-average market rents, so that will be an ongoing element of their eligibility, ensuring that it's passed through to the tenants. And there are also provisions around public programming. They will have to be able to provide, as in the case of a municipal capital facility, access to the public and certain specific cultural programs.
Is it possible that if not all of the tenants are at below-market rent or within the target space that we're looking for, that there may be some additional benefits, i.e. they've got some standard lease provisions, they've got residential, you know, any other mix inside that co-located facility?
It is quite likely that many of the property owners who apply will have a very different mix of tenants. One of the properties prospectively applying, 401 Richmond, for example, brings together for-profit, not-for-profit charity across a variety of sectors with the intention of the collective being stronger than the individual parts.
So, that includes for-profit. So, to be more efficient, if it's our policy intent to actually provide some benefits to the nonprofit sector, the creative sector that are providing community benefit to the city, why not just go through the front door with a grant? Right? They've already got a relationship with you, and they've got rising costs. Why not just do it that way?
For two principal reasons. First, the province of Ontario opened up the policy conversation around incenting such properties through the tax code. Secondly, we are, we have limited granting funds from which to serve a variety of policy objectives. In this case, the tax provision appeared to be complementary to what we do in granting.
Thank you.
Counselor Fragadakis.
Thanks, Madam Speaker. And through you to staff, and they can determine who answers it, we have this year discussed a number of times problems arising out of the province's market value assessment regime and how it has hurt local businesses and arts organizations. I was wondering if we have looked into this on the residential side? And by that, I mean, in the current residential real estate market, is market value assessment making our property taxes even less progressive than they were, say, three to five years ago?
So, through the speaker, impact market value assessment has been with us now for 20 years. It was passed by the province in 1998, and we've seen a tremendous amount of real estate appreciation within the city of Toronto over the last three, four years. And it's varied across neighborhoods, across areas within the city. And it seems to me that when initially it was introduced, the province allowed the city to phase in increases on the residential sector. That hasn't been done in about 15 years or so. And so, it may be a time where we revisit the potential for including some form of mitigation measures with respect to residential.
Okay, thanks very much. So, no, it hasn't. When was the last time we took steps to strengthen the property tax deferral and other programs designed to make our property tax system somewhat fairer and somewhat more progressive? Are you saying that was 15 years ago?
So, if we're referring to the tax deferral program that's offered to low-income seniors, I think that's been in place for some time. The thresholds have been adjusted to account for inflation, to keep pace with inflation. And in fact, there's a recommendation in the report that's before you that codifies that to the CPI related to the city of Toronto.
So, the last time we took steps to do that was what? You're doing it now, and then the last time was last year?
I think it was three years ago that it was pegged to inflation, yes.
Okay. Generally, would you say that a vehicle registration tax is progressive? Not the one that we used to have here in the city of Toronto, but generally?
So, a vehicle registration tax is a fixed amount levied against the ownership of vehicles. And to the extent that, you know, that's seen as, you know, it doesn't differentiate on the basis of whether it's a luxury vehicle or a non-luxury vehicle, so I'm not certain that it's entirely progressive.
Okay. So, are there measures that could be taken to make a vehicle tax registration more progressive? Like, for example, if you were to drive a Hummer, or you were to drive an electric vehicle, if we had the current regime in place, they'd still pay each $60, but they're not actually polluting the environment in the same way. So, are there measures, do you think, that we could take that would make it more progressive?
I think, subject to obviously a further review, my suggestion is that that is entirely within the authority of city council to design that type of a tax.
Are you aware if the provincial government has looked at making its vehicle registration tax more progressive or more supportive of environmental policy initiatives?
I'm not aware of that, counsel.
Okay. Has there been any review by the provincial government on the issue of progressive and fair taxes and municipal revenue streams, be it taxes or fees, in the province of Ontario?
So, we've received a request from executive committee to engage in extensive consultations on property tax reform with the province, and we'll be doing that. We'll also be looking at potentially implementing a graduated tax rate on residential property. That is something that we don't currently have the legislative authority to do, but certainly will be engaged in discussions with my counterparts at the province.
Okay. My last question is, is not one of the aims of our provincial and federal income tax regimes to have a progressive tax regime?
Yes, I think that's generally the Income Tax Act provides for a progressive rate of taxation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, through the speaker, to our CFO. Could you just remind us, bridge financing is what?
Bridge financing is...
Not for building bridges, as my colleague said.
It's to deal with interim measures to put in place to finance interim costs pending a more permanent solution.
So, they are draws from reserve funds and one-time draws of various sorts, right? They're not permanent ongoing?
Yes, through the speaker, they are temporary in nature.
And this year, how much do we have in bridge financing in this budget?
I'm advised by Ms. LaVita that it's 77 million.
So, 77 million. My calculation is that that would be about a 2.6% increase in taxes. If we were to cover the cost of those unsustainable financing mechanisms that we've used, is that correct?
I think the math is correct, yes.
So, for that amount, we could say no more drawing on, or we have not drawn in this budget, on unsustainable sources.
That's first, yes.
And wouldn't that be the better approach to building a sustainable budget at the city of Toronto?
So, I think over the course of the last decade or so, we've relied less on these one-time measures, so I think we've made considerable progress over the years. But certainly, from a fiscal accountability perspective, I think that would probably be the best course of action, yes.
Thank you. Now, what is your, how much will that be again in your outlook for 2019?
So, through you, Madam Speaker, as a result of these measures, we will see about 52 million showing up in 2019 and another 27 million in 2020.
Okay, so we still will be carrying those for two years. Plus 2019 assumes the annualized impact of other prior-year decisions, so we're looking at impact from other salary and benefit and inflationary factors. And we're looking again at, even with a transit increase, and if we assume a 2.3% residential property tax for 2019, we will still have $303 million as an opening pressure. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
So, instead of trying to prevent and lowering that future pressure that keeps coming at us every year and actually building a sustainable budget, we're adding more to it.
Well, through you, Madam Chair, I mean, the components that are here before you in part are from these one-time measures. It's also a significant part is from the operating impact of the capital program that you, that you're approving, as well as the ongoing costs of doing business. So, it's all components?
Right. So, every time we have to absorb inflation with a 0% base budget, we are absorbing those additional costs. So, I understand there's a great deal of savings in this budget. I just wanted to quickly ask about childcare. If we were to have assumed the 20% contribution that council committed to fund childcare this year to match federal provincial contributions, what would that amount be?
11.2 million dollars.
So, we should have had 11.2 million to meet our commitment. How much is in the budget?
The 11.2 million is phased in over three years with 2 million this year.
There's 2 million this year, and if we were to add 2 million, that tax increase, or sorry, if we were to add 9.2, which is the difference, what would that, what would that be in a tax increase, Mr. CFO? I think you told me it was point...
Yes, through the speaker.
That was your last question.
It's a third of 1%, roughly 0.32.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher.
Thank you. Just have a couple of general questions. And previously, the province used to pay 50% of the operating for the TTC. When did that cease?
I believe it ceased upon amalgamation, 1998.
So, 20 years ago, the anniversary of amalgamation, the province stopped paying the 50% operating.
Yes.
Would that have had an effect on the fares that people paid, that operating dollars?
So, certainly it has had an impact on the municipal contribution towards the TTC. We now fund a greater share, and I would suspect that it has had an impact on the fares as well.
So, does anybody have any idea what those fares rose? Right now, fares are bringing in $1.239 billion of the TTC operating budget. Do we have any idea what the fares were over the last number of years or pre-amalgamation percentage of the budget?
Sorry, Speaker.
We'll have to get those numbers. We don't have them readily here.
Might be a hard question, but these fares represent a certain percentage of the overall budget currently, and about a third, someone says. So, previously, it was a half. Is that right?
Speaker, I'm going to suggest that the CFO for the TTC respond to that.
Oh, thank you very much. Where is that fantastic?
Traditionally, it would have been 68%.
Sorry, traditionally, tell me that full sentence. What would have been 68%?
I'll put your time on hold.
So, pre-amalgamation, 68% of it was covered by fares.
And where did the 50% of the operating assist go?
So, the subsidy was split 50/50 between the province and the city.
So, how much money have we then lost, or have we gained? Are they still paying? It looks like to me that we...
I won't have the exact dollar of how much money we've lost. I can get that from you.
So, 68%, and now it's 100% in the fares. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I'm hearing no from a commissioner, yes, over there.
74% now by fares.
74% by fares, and previously, it was 68.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how much that is in dollars, today's dollars?
We can get back to you with the numbers.
And then, I'm just looking at what every taxpayer pays, and that was a great slide, by the way. I want to thank staff for page 24, which was great, because it lays out your average tax bill, and then it shows you what you're paying for in numbers of dollars. So, it appears to say that the TTC and my tax bill for my home, if I was paying $3,000, basically $500 of that would be going to the TTC. Have I read that right?
Through the speaker, yes, that is in fact the case. And in fact, if one was to allocate the debt charges by program area, the TTC would even attract more of the share of the tax burden.
And I guess if I'm a Toronto taxpayer looking back over the last 20 years, and I'd say, well, now I'm paying $500, I wonder what I would have been paying if the 50% subsidy was still in place. Does anybody want to take a stab at that?
You know, it's really difficult to do the math on the fly, but it would probably be less.
So, maybe you could do the math after you sit down, and then I can get that number. That'd be much appreciated. And then, I just want to go back to TCHC as well. There's 168, $170 in each tax bill, and it looks like previously, what percentage of the portfolio is the Ontario housing, previous Ontario housing for Toronto community housing?
Through the chair, it's 2/3.
2/3. Oh, you're over there. 2/3. And in the past, did the city pay anything towards that? I haven't got, is somebody coming on that answer?
Hold the time.
On the Ontario housing portion.
So, Counselor, can you repeat your question, please?
That in the past, for Ontario housing, 20, I'm just going back to amalgamation because people have been having these little amalgamation parties and how great it is. So, I just have to go back and say, prior to amalgamation, now, we have 400, 500, sorry, this one is $170 a year from my taxes go to support TCHC, and that includes the old stock, the Ontario housing stock. How much of that was covered in Toronto or any of the former municipalities' taxes before amalgamation?
Before amalgamation, that would have been a provincial expense.
So, nothing? And that is 2/3 of the portfolio. So, would I be right to say that if the province was still paying its fair share, that our operating costs should be recovered by 2/3 from the...
That was your last question?
In fact, it would be more than that, Counselor. So, the nonprofit costs were provincially funded or federally funded as well, so that would be, you know, if we didn't have to pay those costs, there'd be significant savings to the taxes.
Thank you, thank you. We're going into the second item, actually. Counselor Layton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm going to keep us on the first item. Could I go to page 11 of the presentation? And I'm hoping to ask the city manager, because he mentioned that the province has been impacted by the volatility of the LTT, and I'm wondering if you could just give us examples of when and what were the market conditions under which that happened? I'm sorry, Madam Speaker.
1990 and 2008, off the top of my head.
Sorry, 1990 and 2008?
Yes.
And what were the conditions that the housing market were in at those times?
Conditions were the entry into recession.
And that saw a drop-off in prices and the volume of sales?
And volume, both, yes.
So, are there any parallels between those two situations, 1990 and 2008, that we're experiencing right now? I know there was a recent report that showed the volume was stagnant, but...
So, I had the privilege of being the Ontario Deputy of Finance in 2008, and I can tell you that, the idea of actually forecasting an entry into recession is silly. You realize that once you're over the edge, there are precedent aspects about market volatility or variety of other things, but they're kind of part of a routine financial condition, and at some point, it turns out that the market has reversed. It is only obvious in retrospect.
So, you're talking about forecasting. That's difficult to forecast for a recession. I can appreciate that. The, but we forecast for our assessment growth, correct, into next year, the year after, the year after that?
We do, yes.
How far out do we forecast?
We rely on the years, we rely on the numbers for an annual basis.
Sorry?
We rely, we forecast it for two years out, but the budget's done on an annual basis.
Okay, so we forecast for two years. Do we forecast anything else that factors into the revenue of our budget?
We actually don't have a fiscal structure that extends out beyond the pressure list for the first two years.
But do we, do we forecast any other, any other revenue sources out to two years saying, this is what we could probably expect in 2020?
When we do the pressure list, yes, we do, but that's basically an assumption rather than a forecast.
Okay. So, it's not a forecast, then? So, we're not looking at any other market conditions that might contribute to...
That's correct, yes.
So, is that, so that's what happens with the LTT, then?
With, we do not have a model or a structure or a way of actually forecasting land transfer tax. We've made a policy decision to essentially hold it at the prior-year level.
Now, if, if the budget direction to the city manager in April, May, the direction letter that came from council...
Yes.
That said, hold us to 0%, hold us to 0% in growth in expenditures, bring back a budget that said, we're going to hold it to inflation. We didn't give you, balance it on the LT, on a higher-than-average LTT. We said, the inflationary rate was what you're getting. We said, "The inflationary rate was what you're getting for tax revenue." Is that right?
That was what was behind the motion, and I understand it. But the direction was to come back with as close to net, or to come back with net zero on the city programs, yes.
So what if that line was deleted? Well, how would, how would the recommendation you're bringing here today in this item be different if it didn't include the direction to come back at an inflationary cost increase? Would your decision have been to gobble it all up and cover it all with an LTT and take from reserves? Or would it have been to maintain our reserves, perhaps even invest in them, and raise revenue?
So I think that is a, with respect, I think that is a policy question for city council and your treatment of land transfer tax. And the assumption is obviously a matter for debate here. From one particular perspective, if we take away the land transfer tax, it puts quite severe pressure, approximately $100 million. That would require either a property tax increase or a reduction in expenditure of that value.
Now, I'm going to get a... This will be my last question, I guess. But on slide number 11, you said that there's a structural gap that exists. Do you think it's prudent for us to fill that structural gap or wait until the next term of council?
I think that question prudence is actually up to council. But obviously, from a staff and a preliminary budget standpoint, staff did bring in the full $100 million, preferring not to cut programs or make that recommendation at that, at that point, feeling that that would be something addressed in year if required. But staff would not increase the rate of expenditure beyond what was supported by the preliminary budget.
Thank you. Counselor Shiner?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Farrag? I asked you earlier if you're able to find out values of homes, because the average home value that we use for taxes is $624,000. Do you know how many homes we have that are under $1 million? And how many are over $1 million?
Through the speaker, yes. In fact, I do have that information. About 680,000 homes are valued at under $1 million. The balance, approximately 96,000 are over.
Sorry, 680,000 are under $1 million, and only 96,000 are over $1 million?
That is based on valuations as at January 1st of 2016.
Thank you. Appreciate that. In your presentation, you show us the total spending 2010 versus 2018, $12 billion to $13 billion. Do you know what it is from 2010 to 2014 and 2015 to 2018?
So that will require some time to gather, but certainly, we can provide it.
Thank you. The City Building Fund, 5% of residential. Am I correct? 0.5% of residential.
The City Building Fund is, in fact, a half a percent applied against the residential tax.
But it's less on commercial and industrial classes, because we say they should be charged less. Can we charge the same rate?
No. We, in fact, we cannot, under provincial regulation. Those classes are shielded from a burden that's in excess of half a percent or 50% of the residential increase.
So to raise theirs, we'd have to raise the residential portion?
That's correct, yes.
And same thing when it comes to multi-res? There's zero?
The multi-residential tax class has been shielded from any tax increases for 2018.
Rate of inflation this year is?
According to the Consumer Price Index for All Goods in Toronto, it's 2.1%.
Rate of tax increase on residential homes is recommended in this budget?
The budget increase is 2.1%.
No, recommended rate increase on a residential home. The average home at $624,000, that was paying $2,900. Are they going to go up by 2.1% or an amount higher than that?
Through the speaker, as I mentioned in my presentation, there are other impacts beyond the budget impacts.
What is that percentage?
And the rate impact is 2.9%.
Okay, that's 2.9% instead of 2.1%. So almost 50% greater than inflation. Right? 2.9...
Yeah, it's about 40%.
40% increase. And then my last question is, and I don't know if Mr. Gaddens is here. I saw him. There he is.
I'll put your time on hold till he gets here. Where is he?
He's coming down the stairs, in the plaid shirt minus the tie today. I was teasing about that.
He still looks good.
I would like you to know my fellow over here at council, Counselor Pasternak is the one that said that.
Okay, here he is.
So do you know how many affordable housing units were built in 20... Were actually constructed in 2017?
Counselor, through the chair, that number is just over 300.
Sorry. So 300 were built in 2017? Do you know how many in previous years?
I can get that information for you, Counselor.
Were more built last year, would you suggest, than previous years?
We're seeing an uptake in the number of units that are being built, particularly as a result of the Open Door Program.
But all that have actually been constructed is 300. Do you know how many in the last three or four years have been constructed?
I'm happy to get those for you, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. That's my question, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Crisanti?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So page 21 of the, of your report or of the presentation this morning, I just want to start off here on how we arrived, how you arrived at the 2.1%. When I look at the Consumer Price Index for Toronto, it's at 1.9. When I look at the Canada-wide, it's 1.9. And when you isolate Ontario on its own, it's 1.5. So how did we arrive at the 2.1? And I gather we're building from there with the, to, to a rate of actually 2.9. Can you just go through that, please?
Certainly, through the speaker. In fact, the year-over-year increase in the Consumer Price Index for Toronto All Goods, published by StatsCan, is 2.1%. That's what we've relied on in terms of the budget levy increase. That's before you. In addition to that, council has previously adopted a policy to increase the levy by 50 basis points, half a percent. And that levy is intended to fund key capital projects in the areas of transit and affordable housing, social housing. In addition to that, there are CVA shifts, current value assessment shifts across property classes, as well as council's previously adopted policy to reduce the commercial industrial tax rates over time to be more competitive. So the cumulative impact of these measures translates into a 2.9% residential impact.
So you said the 2.1 was published by StatsCan?
Yes.
I didn't see that. So I'll just, so that's... I saw the 1.9, and I have it here, but so...
Through the speaker, certainly, we could provide you with that information.
All right. So, thank you. And so you're, so page 24, on looking at that chart, the Toronto Police Service Board budget is $682 million operating budget. Is that correct?
So once we allocate the average tax liability, if you will, the average homeowner would be contributing $680 on average towards that service?
Okay. And that's the same as it was in 2016?
In fact, yes. The police budget has remained at a 0% increase.
Since the, if I could draw just a little bit into the modernization, the police modernization program that's happening right now as we speak, how many, do you happen to know how many police officers have left the force since the implementation of the plan?
That's not part of this item, Counselor Crisanti.
Well, it impacts the budget.
Second item?
Oh, second item?
Yeah.
Because I have three or four questions along.
You should ask that in the second item. We're just talking about the tax rate.
So I'll hold it for the next item? All right, then I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Torry?
Thanks, Madam Speaker. I just have two or three things I want to ask the staff about. First of all, can I just confirm on this discussion that was just had through you, Madam Speaker, with Counselor Crisanti, that the use of the rate of inflation you referred to by Statistics Canada is entirely consistent with the same rate of inflation that has been used to calculate or to measure against tax increases, not only in this term of office, but I think I'm right, going back into the previous term of office?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
So there's been no change in...
There has been no change in methodology, and we're, we're really focused on getting the right number.
All right. And that rate of inflation, then, is 2.1% for this year, just to confirm that again?
That is confirmed, yes.
And that's based on Statistics Canada information?
Statistics Canada All Goods, City of Toronto.
Okay. And then the other two adjustments that are made to the tax rate or to the tax bill, as it were, are two things that have been approved explicitly by the city council with respect to policy decisions in effect that the council has made previously.
Through the speaker, those two policy decisions, as well as the provincial decision to shield the multi-residential tax class from any increases, and therefore, it precipitates a shift onto the residential class.
Thank you. Now, if we could just move on to what has been referred to variously as bridging or one-time measures. First of all, and I'll direct this to whoever would like to answer it, can I assume that bridging or one-time, one-time measure would include, for example, well, it includes reserve draws, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And does it also include the use of a prior-year surplus?
It does not. However, much depends on how we view a reserve draw. If we review it as a, if we view the reserve draw as a rainy day fund, then we're hitting it relatively early. If we view it as essentially a down payment on next year's expense, then it's consistent.
So when, in say, 2010, 11, and 12, hundreds of millions of dollars were used to balance the budget from the prior-year surplus, what would you call that, then? Would you call that bridge financing? Or would you call that one-time payment or one-time measure? What would you call that?
It was, of course, one-time measures.
One-time measures. So it would fit under this definition we hear so much about in terms of one-time measures. In those years, $343 million, $372 million, and $124 million, respectively, would be either one-time measures or...
Bridging strategies or one-time measures, yes.
Or reserves. And so if we look then at, if we look then at this year's slide number 37, which was very helpful, and you looked at 2015, where we had a total of $110 million of either one-time measures or reserve draws, it's set out there. Would I be correct in recalling that that was as high as it was that year because we chose, as a council, to spread out a provincial cutback that had been imposed, among other things, and amortize that effectively over a period of time? And that that's what's reflected in that higher number there?
Yes. And that reduction had been announced by the province in 2013 and not addressed by the province, by the city until 2015.
Okay. And then if we go to this year, and I guess last year, would I be right in reading this slide of saying that in 2017, it was a total of $92 million from one-time measures and reserve draws?
Yes, much driven by the treatment of Toronto community housing.
All right. And then if we go to this year, am I right in saying that same slide has that number down from $92 million to $77 million with a budget that substantially increases services? But the bottom line on this slide is that number is down to $77 million from last year at $92 million and 2015 at $110 million?
Yes. And the only distinction being that we are choosing to lower the stabilization fund and direct that towards increased services.
Am I right in that regard when we talk about these stabilization funds being lower, through you, Madam Speaker, that, in fact, it's budgeted that it could go lower? But our experience has been in most years that there's a surplus coming in, so that those balances don't, in fact, go down. They're allocated to potentially go down if all the money were spent and there was no surplus.
And I think this is the core distinction I'm trying to get at. If we consider it as a hedge against future tax loss, we'd likely not draw it down at this point. If we consider it as a pool of funds available to withdraw for current money, which is to withdraw and get a head start on the 2018 budget, then it's consistent with that.
All right. And just one more thing. The figures that were referred to about the increase of operating budgets one year over the next, going back in time or whatever, am I right in saying that if you look at the sheets, in fact, the increase in the budget over this four-year term, including this budget this year, has been to the city taxpayers, $414 million? That's the net number, because the gross number is higher, but it includes money that's come, in fact, from other governments and from other taxpayers. And so the actual cost to city taxpayers over that time in the range of a 2% to 3% increase per year has been $414 million.
That was your last question?
That is, in fact, the case. We always look at this from a levy increase in terms of how much we levy our residential taxpayers. And in fact, the number is closer to $400 million increase. And just to confirm, as I indicated in the opening presentation, that's very tight management and gets a lot of productivity out of those dollars.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess this is a question probably through the city manager. Recently, a couple months ago, our rating agencies came out with a report, and that's pretty much what we pay for our interest. Can you talk to me, Standard &amp; Poor's specifically, talked about our rating, which I believe was a double A minus? But can you talk about some of the particulars that they mentioned about our fiscal health?
Certainly. We, our debt is rated by the three credit rating agencies, S&amp;P, DBRS, and Moody's. We have a double A-plus rating, which is just one notch below triple A. And the rationale behind the rating is that the credit, rating agencies view Toronto as having a very diverse economy, good fiscal management. We have high liquidity in the form of, you know, significant reserves, relatively low debt per capita. And so these are all credit fundamentals that make it attractive for bondholders to hold City of Toronto bonds and invest in City of Toronto debt instruments.
So, and when we have, now, we've been issuing debt based on a certain policy of the city. We've been going out to issue that particular debt. And in fact, when we're going out to the bond markets, we've had a lot of success with that and probably has a lot to do with the ratings that we've received from Standard &amp; Poor's and other agencies?
Through the speaker, yes, most definitely so. In fact, when one looks at our cost of capital versus a triple A entity, such as, for example, the region appeal, the difference between our cost of capital and theirs is only about three basis points. And so, you know, the markets, the capital markets view Toronto as an excellent credit quality.
So when you're looking at a city of our size, in fact, you know, according to the rating agencies, we're pretty strong fiscally in many respects. Is that correct?
Yes, according to those independent rating agencies, that is the case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crissi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To our CFO, just a few questions. To our CFO, in the last 10 or 15 years, whatever you know, how many times has our residential tax rate not been increased at the rate of inflation? In other words, how many times has it been increased below the rate of inflation?
So my sense, my sense is, although I don't have the statistics in front of me, my sense is that it's, you know, it's been the norm to have it increased at or below the rate of inflation.
Okay. In previous years, I've asked our CFO, Rob Ressini, this question. And so I'll put it to you for our first year together. Is, when adjusted to inflation over the last 10 years, have our residential taxes gone up or down when adjusted to inflation?
I think from a property tax-based perspective, it's likely that, in real terms, the tax liability has likely gone down. And the rationale behind that is because in 2009, we were afforded additional taxing authorities, namely MLTT. And so, and so that's made up the difference.
So just to be clear, on residential property taxes, not LTT, on residential property taxes, when adjusted to inflation, residents are paying less, not more, in the last 10 years?
On a real basis, my sense is that that is likely the case.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Yes, along those same lines. How long has the MLTT been in place?
So city council implemented the MLTT, I believe, in 2009?
Yes. Okay, and so, how many, how many, how many people have sold their homes over that period of time?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Is that, for all those people that have sold their homes, they've actually paid more in taxes, net-net, because they have, they've had to pay the MLTT. So they've paid an excessive amount over, in taxes, when you compare that to just their property taxes. Is that not, is that not true?
So I think, I think MLTT has, in fact, mitigated the impact...
No, I get that. We're talking about, somebody who has paid the MLTT has paid more than their fair share of taxes to the city.
So MLTT has an impact both on the residential, but also on the commercial side as well.
So it would be the businesses, too, have been paid more than their fair share. So it's not just businesses, it's businesses and residences.
That is the nature of the MLTT.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the questions. We'll now go to the speakers. Councillor Perks.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to begin by moving a motion that the city amend Executive Committee Recommendation 6A by deleting 4,230 et cetera, 2.1, all those numbers, with 4.286 in all those numbers, and that the table in Recommendation 6B respecting tax rates be amended accordingly. Effectively, what this does is take the 2.9 overall property tax increase and increase it to 4.0 for net value to the City of Toronto of about 55.6 million. It would affect the other property classes by the same percentage that they currently have, and importantly, follow the provincial regulatory framework that says that multi-unit residences, apartment buildings, stay at 0% increase. Speaker, during the last eight years, I have been to budget debate after budget debate, where the argument has been made over and over and over again that we keep property taxes low so that the City of Toronto will be affordable, and that if we increase property taxes, it would not be affordable. My contention, and I think the evidence, is that that's absolutely 100% backwards, wrong, upside down, and incorrect. Let's just walk through what the effect of voting for my motion would be on a variety of people in Toronto. First of all, if you're a tenant in the City of Toronto, you're protected. If my motion passes, you get a 0% increase, just like if my motion doesn't pass. But what else happens to you? Well, we have more money available for the services you depend on. If you're a person who is a tenant and uses childcare, we could use some of this money to benefit you. If you're a person who, in Toronto, is a tenant and takes the TTC, we could use some of this money to benefit you. In fact, if my motion passes, the half of Torontonians who are tenants do better financially, because childcare and transit cost money. And if those services aren't available, you have to do something even more expensive. Get a car, rely on private childcare, which is more expensive. When we spend public money, we provide services. Those services save people money. So, for half the population, it would be a better thing to make the city affordable if we were to increase property taxes. But it doesn't stop there. The argument is made sometimes that within the home-owning population, there's a vulnerable population that would be hurt. That's the famous seniors will lose their homes argument. And there are two things we need to think about in terms of this. First of all, we have a tax forgiveness and a tax deferral program. If you believe that the level of property taxation in the City of Toronto is putting seniors who are house poor at risk, you know what you could do? You could take some of the $55 million here, and I would go along with you and use it to move those thresholds up so we protect even more seniors. That's an option available. If your real concern is protecting seniors, if your real concern is making sure they don't lose their homes, we should be enriching that program to protect more of them. If you support my motion and put some of that money to that, you are doing a better job of protecting seniors than you are if you vote for the budget put forward by executive committee. So, increasing taxes would also protect that group. There are also an awful lot of people who are young families, first-time homeowners. They're struggling. I agree, they absolutely are struggling. That's why I was sure to ask Mr. Farag, if they had any evidence, memory, anything in their documents, to say that anybody has lost their house as a result of property tax increases in the City of Toronto. They said two things. They said, "We have not foreclosed," and I've looked at the kind of letter councillor Pasternak's talking about, that's a notice, that's not a foreclosure. "We have not foreclosed." Secondly, as Mr. Farag pointed out, you would be a lunatic to sell a $600,000 home to help you avoid paying an extra $60 in taxes a year, which is about what my motion would do. $5 a month. Nobody is going to sell their home because they can't make $5 a month. Their bank and they will work a way through it. So, those people who are in that position, the reason they're struggling is because we have the most expensive childcare in the country. They're struggling because we can't afford to put more service on the TTC, so they're paying expensive parking. They're struggling because we don't offer enough recreation programs through the city programs, so they have to go to private recreation services. If you want the city to be more affordable for three-quarters of Torontonians, you will support my motion.
Thank you, Councillor Perks. Councillor Roger Mary, clarification of the motion.
I believe I have a question, Speaker?
Thank you. Three minutes.
Through you, Speaker, have you indicated, or did I miss it, how much per home that would be in terms of dollar amounts?
So, for the average homeowner, it would be roughly between $55 and $60 a year. But it's important to remember, there is no such thing as the average homeowner. If you have a modest house, it will be less than that. If you have an expensive house, it will be more than that. The thing about the property tax is it's a tax on how much wealth you have. So the more wealth you have in terms of real estate, the more you would pay on an annual basis.
Thank you. Councillor Mamalidi to speak.
Speaker, I'm going to move that the city council approve a 0% tax increases, increase for 2018 for all property tax classes. I should just post that up, because it's the same one that I try and move every year. Madam Speaker, I know you're going to, you're going to say that you've heard my speech a number of times already this term of office, but someone needs to be repetitive, because at the end of the day, we're just talking about the same thing all the time, and it seems to be increasing taxes for people who can't afford it. It seems to be increasing taxes and not getting the level of service to the people that pay for it. They're upset. So someone needs to keep reminding everyone in the chamber that this is the sentiment out there, whether you want to believe it or not. We keep hearing about it every election, but we keep doing the same things to the taxpayer, and gouge them every chance we get. This is an $11 billion lipstick on a pig of a budget. That's what this is. It hides the reality of what this is about. This is nothing but a budget that increases staff, increases the bureaucracy, and delivers no extra services to those that want to pay. And all you have to do is ask your constituents whether or not they think that a 4% increase, this is going to be about 4% increase in taxes and fees to every person that pays property taxes and owns a home in this city. If you ask them whether or not they're satisfied with the level of service that the City of Toronto gives them, and is satisfied that they've had to pay almost 20% higher in property tax rates in four years that this administration has been put together, they will tell you that they're not getting better service when it comes to fixing their roads. They will tell you that they're not getting service when it comes to their sidewalks, and how uneven it might be in front of their house, and how difficult it is even to get someone to come and fix a particular slab of concrete on one of those sidewalks. They'll tell you that they don't want to pay for things like a dog park, a poodle park in the city, a $3 billion poodle park, when they can't even get their local parks fixed up, their swing sets, their, their, their slides, their playgrounds are all put on hold because we decide that this is the type of budget that holds the priority and not community, the community endeavors that people would like to see. So, for me, I stand up again and challenge everyone who's voting in favor of this budget as to whether or not their constituents are satisfied that they're having to pay 5% more in their water rates, 3% more in their garbage rates. By the way, the garbage rates, I still don't know why we do this to people and pull the wool over their eyes. People have paid for their garbage pickup forever, and we hide it behind these fees. They deserve their garbage pickup with their property taxes that they pay to the city. I'd like to challenge so much more. I'd love for anyone here to tell me whether or not you believe that, and I, you know, I need to, I need to say this, because we're hearing it regularly. Sales of homes are down, which means the city's not getting the taxes that they have, they have, they have sold everybody on these, on these budgets over the last few years. When you start talking about us not knowing what the circumstances might be, and whether or not the taxes that we're used to are going to be there this year, and then to say to this council that we'll deal with it if we're not collecting the taxes that we think we'll be collecting when the sales have come down. That's a reality, and we know what's going to happen this year. But at the same time, we're trying to convince the public that another 4% increase in property taxes is valid and justified. Why? Why are we lying to the people of the City of Toronto when it comes to these increases? Why can't we just tell them the truth? And why can't those of you that want the tax increases stand up and move your motions to increase property taxes where it should come from, if that's where you want it to come from? Why do we have to hide it through all the rates and garbage rates and all of the things that are hidden in these budgets?
Thank you, Councillor Mamalidi.
Be honest with the people of the City of Toronto.
Thank you. Councillor Chrisanti.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I have a motion, if it can be placed on the screen. And the motion, which I'll speak to for my comments today, specifically relates to the creative co-location facilities subclass. And the motion, as you'll see, first deals with the rate that is put forward from 30 to 50% with the report back. And the second is a technical amendment from staff on some of the details related to eligibility. And I'll speak to these now. I guess, first of all, what I would note is, this piece of work around the creative co-locations facilities subclass, this has been 18 months in the works. It is the fourth and final time we, as a council, will deal with this matter, and we're dealing with it today because it is the final piece of the puzzle before it goes to the province for regulatory approval. And there's been a tremendous amount of work done, not just on this floor of council, but by city staff. And I want to single out and recognize Joe Farag and his team, as well as Mike Williams and Patrick Tobin and all of the folks at EDC. Last, or two weeks ago at city council, we dealt with tax capping related to small businesses. And we talked then, as we talk about now with the subclass, about a fundamentally flawed provincial assessment model. A fundamentally flawed model based on current value assessment and highest and best use that employs a cookie-cutter approach to a city that is not all the same. A cookie-cutter approach where 401 Richmond is assessed on the basis of being a gap in a Starbucks, where Artscape and many of their facilities are assessed on the basis of being condos, where the Centre for Social Innovation is considered in the context as a commercial mall. These are facilities that are not assessed and then taxed on the basis of what they are and how they contribute to the innovative economy that is our city, but rather what they could be if they were simply sold and used off for the most value for money on the basis of highest and best use. And so these rising property values and the rising real estate market we've talked about all day in regards to the LTT, it's having a corresponding negative impact on, by driving creative industries, creative industries, out of our city. And this is a problem, not just because the absence of arts and culture makes an unlivable city, that arts and culture is not a nice-to-have. That is certainly a negative implication. But more broadly, this hurts the economy. That when we hear about the creative economy, when we hear about the innovative economy, that is what we're talking about here. That is what Richard Florida spoke of, but it's also what Jane Jacobs spoke of. It's about the notion that 21st century cities are driven by the creative economy, that that's where we incubate ideas. That's the type of urban core and the type of dynamic that the Amazons of this world want to be attracted to. It's what drives growth. And so, therefore, it is time to act. The 50% up from 30% will ensure that organizations in the future, like 401 and Artscape, not only are here to stay, but they're here to thrive. It will also ensure that we provide incentives for other creative and innovative co-location facilities to arrive. And this is because taxes, at the end of the day, are more than simply a tool for collecting revenue. They are a tool for city building. And thus, the cookie-cutter approach does not work for city building. This subclass will work. It will allow us to build a livable city. And I've been very pleased in, over the last work, to work closely with our budget chief, councillor Crawford, as well as the mayor's office, to arrive, I believe, at a rate that will allow our arts and cultural and innovative hubs to thrive, as Michael Thompson, our Chair of EDC, will continue to make the message to bring more of them to this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Fletcher, clarification of the motion, three minutes.
Yes, I'm just very supportive, just making sure that when you're making this motion, that you are thinking about into the future. So establishing these types of critical economic drivers for the arts in other parts of the city, not simply looking after the problems that have been created in, basically in the West End.
Yeah, if I could speak to another area of the city, in the distillery, for example, Artscape Distillery in the last assessment period saw their taxes go up assessed at 109% increase. And so if we were to have a simply 30% rate reduction, while that would provide a lifeline today, it would be wiped out in another assessment cycle. And so the rationale for looking at a measured, and I think responsible, increase to 50% will allow those organizations across the city to thrive and survive, but also with the report back, will, I think, allow us to look at ensuring in the future we get the right rate, the correct rate to allow more organizations to be part of this.
I guess we're just looking at ones that exist currently, but if we were looking into the future and looking further west, or looking further east into Scarborough, or councillor Burnside, now we're talking about Thorncliff Park, or Unilever site, that we have, we have an instrument in our hands that would make it more attractive to establish these types of really critical cultural hubs in the city.
I think that's an excellent point. If we're looking at a community revitalization, whether it's in Thorncliff or in Weston, that the financial incentive to create a creative hub, a creative co-location facility, exists. Because if we didn't implement this at a proper rate, the next time we go through a revitalization in the north or the east or the west of the city, you're more likely to see them go with what would otherwise be the highest and best use, and that could just be more condos.
And so, have you had this conversation with Mr. Williams about the establishment of these types of creative hubs in other locations, not simply solving the current problem, but looking, actually looking into the future?
Yeah, and so, Chair of EDC, Mr. Williams, has been active on this file. I said EDC, sorry, our GM, sorry, councillor Thompson.
You just got a demotion. Someone got a promotion, someone got a demotion.
And I think the important point, and this is, the report speaks to, which Mr. Williams authored, that the intention of this is not simply to protect the 17 or 18 organizations that currently exist, but rather to create a financial model that will allow the future creative hubs to also arrive and flourish.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Shiner, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I've been supportive of trying to be sure that we don't tax art organizations out of their locations. However, you said there's 17 or 18 organizations like Artscape. How many are in the downtown?
Of the... So Patrick Tobin in Economic Development and Culture has a list that can be provided. I don't have the exact numbers of how many are downtown in the three wards and the core versus outside of that, but there are about 17 organizations across the city that I'm told would qualify under this eligibility criteria.
Well, I saw the Artscape list. Most of them are downtown or more in the core of the old city of Toronto. Am I correct in my assumption those are the organizations?
So there are organizations such as the Akin Collective, which is located in Scarborough that I understand is on the list. I don't have the full rundown of all 17 organizations, but I know our staff in Economic Development and Culture do.
Well, it follows on the questions that my colleague Counselor Fletcher had, Counselor Burnside, because we know that property values are escalating, in particular in areas of high interest, in the downtown core and parts of old Toronto and areas like that. And we see the art organizations that were in those locations for many years, and now they're of much higher value. And some are being still held for development purposes, even though we're looking at reducing the tax rate while they're there. But by reducing the tax rate while they're there, impacts the fact that maybe they would want to move out to Scarborough or out to Etobicoke or out to Counselor Burnside's area where there's an awful lot of vacant space out there that could be used for the same thing. So I'm wondering really about, well, I understand the benefit of the individual groups, the impact that it has in not allowing the shift to less expensive space of these art organizations around the entire city and the fact that it's going to probably keep them more in their current locations or in the downtown area.
So as clarification of the motion, I guess I would say that I don't view this as a zero-sum game, which is, as you explain, that by driving organizations out of the downtown, that is to the benefit of areas outside of the downtown. Rather, I see this as when you create an effective subclass for creative hubs, that will seek to incentivize creative hubs across the city. I don't see this as one or the other. Rather, the intent of this motion is to make them viable in all areas regardless of the property values.
In clarification of my motion, where did I say it was a zero-sum game? I was simply asking the fact that you're going to be taking the more expensive properties, are you not? And then having those properties with a lowering tax rate, so it de-incentivizes organizations that may move out to other areas and spread the good work they do to other areas across the city.
Again, as the staff report explains, the intention of a subclass is to allow organizations that exist today to continue to exist while also creating a financial incentive for other creative hubs to arrive and come to new areas. And so I don't believe that we should be running a city whereby we encourage organizations to be priced out of the market in the hope they'll go elsewhere. Rather, we create a level playing field where everybody can exist and operate successfully, whether in Scarborough, North York, or downtown.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, clarification of the motion.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Through you to Counselor Cresti. So Counselor Cresti, 401 Richmond, the impact assessment created a huge challenge for that particular facility?
Yeah, 401 Richmond, an organization located on Richmond with 159 tenants, provides below-market rent. And they provide below-market rent in order to allow that co-location facilities with all the different tenants to thrive. With the increase in assessment, they told us, as we've heard from other organizations like Artscape, that they were going to have to sell and leave.
Right.
Unless we acted.
And so this is that action that's necessary, that is going to be broad enough to ensure that as the city evolves and grows, that there will be an instrument in place, a tool to allow organizations like this in terms of their co-locations as such?
That's correct. This provides a financial means for organizations that provide below-market rent opportunities in a co-location facility to continue to exist. And I spoke just today with the President of Artscape and the owner of 401 Richmond, who confirmed that at 50% they can do that. But it also creates a model where others can arrive because they have the certainty of what the assessment model is going to be.
Right. I know in your remarks, I think you made the comments about the province. It doesn't state here in the motion itself, but you are aware that we're not making a final decision here today. It is really more instructive that the province will actually hopefully make the appropriate changes to allow for this 50%?
Yeah, so in September of 2017, Minister Souza wrote a letter to the Mayor and council stating that if council chose to implement a rate reduction and put in place criteria that they would adopt the regulatory changes by virtue of the signing of a pen to allow that to go forward. The motion that was passed in December of 2017 established the policy criteria and the core eligibility. What we're doing today is putting the rate forward. Building on what Minister Souza stated in September of 2017, it is my understanding that a pen will go to paper to enact this into law through a regulatory change.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Counselor Cresti.
Thank you. Pasternak, clarification of the motion?
Through you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch how much this is going to cost.
Sure. So at the 30% rate, there is a $1.2 million revenue-neutral impact. At the 50%, that is a $1.6 million revenue-neutral. It is revenue-neutral because as a subclass, the city still collects the same $1.6 million, but those $1.6 million as a subclass is then distributed across the 40,007 commercial properties. So it is revenue-neutral and it is a large ocean with a small ripple across 40,000-plus commercial bodies.
Now, I've read a fair amount about enterprise zones where you have geographical boundaries, where if you set up and build, you have to meet certain criteria and then you get the tax break based on those conditions. Does that apply to this?
So this is a specific subclass within the commercial tax bracket. It is intended to provide certainty under the current assessment model. As I think Counselor Holliday illustrated, I think quite well in his questions, there are different ways of approaching this, whether it's on the grant side or trying to deal with it at the source side on the tax class. We have chosen over the last five council decisions in two years to address it on the subclass side, and this is the final step in that.
Okay.
So if we have a regeneration area, could we declare it a creative enterprise zone? And any arts group or arts organization that wants to construct within the regeneration area would be eligible for this break?
So the eligibility criteria within the subclass is outlined within this, that you have to provide below-market rent, that 51% of the tenants have to be creative industries with the definition of it, that there have to be a minimum of five tenants, that you have to have a maximum size of 10,000 square feet or 5,000 if you have more than 40 tenants. Those are the specific eligibility criteria for this subclass. As it relates to zoning and those measures, I'd refer to city planning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Layton to speak.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have a motion, that City Council amend Executive Committee Recommendation 6A by deleting $4,230 million, 2.1%, 1.05%, and 0.7%, and replacing them with 4.254 billion, 2.9%, 1.45%, and 0.96%, so that the recommendation now reads as follows. And this is essentially raising the residential tax rate to 2.9% rather than the rate proposed by Executive, essentially raising us 23.4 million additional operating dollars at a cost of $1.80 a month to the average homeowner. This would allow us to pay for things like the $11.2 million in childcare that is not getting funded in this budget, like the $3.2 million to the TTC that's not getting funded that we need to start putting into. Would allow us to fund the Parks Ambassador programs and would give us a little bit of additional space to either pay for additional capital into our housing, put into our tax stabilization funds or reserve, so that we're not drawing on more reserves than we should be this year and in fact putting us on more solid footing, as our city manager had suggested. I'd like to thank Counselor Cresti for putting forward that motion that will now capture more organizations in the city that will help us ensure the creative future of our city. I will be supportive of that motion. I'll be, quite frankly, supportive of Counselor Perks' motion, but in the event that that fails, I think that we can all look at this as being a reasonable compromise to continue to fund the pieces of the budget that we want to fund, the priorities that we have as a shared council in transit and childcare and other things, and not leave people further behind in this budget. I wanted to make one, just quick point if I may, because I believe that Mayor Tory, in his speech at Executive on Goldilocks, his famous Goldilocks speech, in fact, missed the key point of that parable. It wasn't just right. Goldilocks was not in the right when she did what she did. I think a more apt parable, I have two. One, and so I read a lot of these stories to my daughters, my daughters, right? So there are a lot on the mind. The Three Little Pigs come to mind. Because rather than investing in a solid foundation and the brick walls of a strong house that can withstand any wind of the economy or other levels of government, we've decided to build the straw house, to build the unsustainable house, to go halfway on some of these measures, to investing in a really strong city. We're not putting the money that we promised into childcare. We're not addressing the issues of housing and our backlog. We're not addressing the issues with overcrowding in the TTC. And where we chose to get the money to go halfway was from reserves, further mortgaging away the future of our next generation, of the next council and subsequent councils. Let us learn the lesson that those three pigs did and that you need to build a strong foundation. I'm going to borrow from another story just very quickly, because The Tortoise and the Hare is actually a really neat story. Its foundation and its message actually comes from, and with some help from my colleague Counselor Perks, from something called The Cricket and the Ant. The cricket spent its days dancing and singing in the summer, spending its time trying to impress others essentially. When the ant spent his time gathering food and storing it away. And when inevitably that winter came, as it does, when inevitably that winter came, that cricket went to that ant and said, "I need food. I've got nothing. I've got nothing. Can you share it with me?" And that ant actually took a different lesson, not one we should take, but said, "No. You should go out and dance this winter." And actually sent him away. That story of The Tortoise and the Hare, The Cricket and the Ant, The Three Little Pigs should teach us something, should teach us that it's more important to invest in full measures, not half measures. And our mayor should remember that the real lesson in Goldilocks is don't get caught sleeping on the job.
Is that your last fable, Counselor Layton?
That is...
Counselor Ojumari, are you ready? Do you have any Aesop's fables you'd like to share with us?
It's Aesop.
It is Aesop, you're right.
Okay, start my timing.
Your time has started. Thank you, Counselor Ojumari.
Speaker, I was working, I was working really hard on a motion to present, and I understand that I can't present it because of the way council voted this morning to deal with the budget. And so I'll just talk about my concerns. My concern is that services in this city are really in for a free fall. My residential streets, the streets that are not arterial roads, have to wait until the snow is at eight centimeters before they are plowed. Used to be five, then six. It's now up to eight. They don't want to do that. The residents are complaining that that's a disservice to them. So instead of providing increase in services, we are providing disservice to residents. And that's what my motion was going to be about, trying to put back that money to a five-centimeter level. So I wanted to talk about snow service generally. We get windrow treatment in North York, not window treatment, windrow treatment. Do you know that the plows with the second arm that come to the North York wards that get windrow clearing are supposed to clear the windrow, but for one car, the equivalent for one-car parking? Many of our houses have two-car parking driveways. They lift the arm and do not, and do not continue on with the windrow clearing with that arm that's already out for that second spot. These are things that provide disservice. These are things that are insulting. Let's leave that for a minute and go to recreation programs and community services. Many, many years ago, I was a proponent of moving those two services, if you'll remember, Madam Chair, and making them report to the same committee and grouping community development and recreation together. Because at the time, I thought, and I think rightly so, that recreation for a city like Toronto with so many of its inner neighborhoods and needy neighborhoods, isn't about private or semi-private tennis lessons. Recreation is about helping to get kids on a more even playing field, to help that playing field level out between the haves and the have-nots. And that's what true 21st century city recreation should be. Do we have enough? No. We have people scrambling, we have moms mainly, scrambling to get onto programs that their kids would really benefit from. I took a look at this private, you may be interested in this, in this private pamphlet that lists costs of private recreation services, and it's called Our Kids. Flip through it, you see what the private sector gives kids. Camps for a week for $1,500, $2,000. I don't need to tell you. This is what our kids are competing with. You take a look at some of our communities, you take a look at Jane Shepard, one of my favorite communities. These kids don't have a home. They don't even have a local community center, never mind competing with kids whose families can afford to send them to these camps. We have such an inequity in the city, such an inequity in housing, in education, in jobless rate. Oftentimes, that U shape that shapes many of the economic development, the planning, the recreation, the poverty, the needs in the city, you know the U shape I'm talking about. It begins in northern Etobicoke, runs down, and ends up in Scarborough, Malvern. That U shape is the shape of our economics, of our housing, of our race relations, of our poverty. That's what the city has become. It's so easy to say, "My residents can't swallow another 1% property tax increase. 1%." It's so easy. This is an election year. That's what's going through my mind, that's what's going through other people's minds. And I understand that. It's about reelection this year, and I understand that. However, the problems in the city are so insidious, and they come out when we talk about student nutrition programs. You know, and 99% of my schools have it because they need it, because the kids aren't getting fed. Or security in our libraries. We had a mayor here once who said, "Oh, why do Billy and Janie need security at their library? I have incidents every day at one of my libraries. Every day. Have two security guards." So if you're looking at the real city...
Wrap up, Counselor?
Thank you. If you're looking at the real city, look at the real needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Campbell? Can I get the microphone? Yeah, audiovisual has you sorted out. Do you want to try your mic, Counsel Campbell?
Over here, Madam Speaker.
There you go.
All good. So Counselor Layton alluded to a fairy tale. That was, I think, appropriate. I don't have any fairy tale, particular fairy tale in mind. My kids are too old for that. But, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about where our finances are going. I mean, this has been a very easy budget year, but you know, the easy times are not going to be ahead of us. going to be ahead of us. We are adding, we have gained $170 million in spending room in the last two years, thanks to the municipal land transfer tax. We have added $53 million in additional spending this year through this budget in new and enhanced. There have been some savings, there's been some cuts and some reductions and some shifting around of money, but we're adding another 400 staff and another $53 million in spending. Some of that spending is warranted, but some of that spending I would classify as want-to-have rather than need-to-have. Each year, we add debt. This is the debt issuance over the last little while and into the future. Every year we add our debt, and we seem to have, I think, a false sense of security about the 15%, you know, debt level. But every year, we are paying more and more in debt service charges, as I'll illustrate Our debt service charges, our debt service charges in 2011 were $382 million. In 2018, it'll be $569 million. By 2021, our debt service charge will almost equal our subsidy to the TTC. It's already the third highest expenditure on our budget. And up, up and away till it hits $800 million, and it exceeds the TTC subsidy. We've added a number of things this year that some people will say are essential. We're adding the time-based transfer, we're adding the fare equity, which is fair for people who are of low income and need to get around. I don't have any problem with that. I think the two-hour transfer, this wasn't the right time for the two-hour transfer. And you know, I sat through a number of budget meetings, and we didn't have, I didn't have anybody come to us and say, "We need more money for culture and the arts." They told us how great it was to have the money for culture and the arts. I didn't have anybody in three deputations come and say, "We need more money for student nutrition, but we're giving more money for student nutrition, whether that's needed or not." So an extra $4 million is going to, is going to a culture, an extra $4 million to culture student nutrition, in addition to other measures in the budget that I think maybe could have been put off for a later date. My concern, my concern is this rising debt level. And eventually, if the goose that's laid the golden egg, which is the municipal land transfer tax, tanks. And last month, jobs were down in Ontario and across Canada, there were job losses. The real estate market was down apparently 20%. I know you can't, you can't do forecasting based on one month, but if that goes into February, and into March, and into April, and into May, and into June, we're going to have some very tough decisions to make. We're not making them now, we're adding because times are good. But when times turn the other way, we just had, we had an awful market last week, we'll see where it goes this week, but we know from the last 2008, when the market crashed, people stopped buying, they stopped spending money, they stopped getting their dividends, they're not rich anymore and they don't buy. If the market goes down, if the real estate market goes down, city council is going to have a day of reckoning that it's going to have to deal with. And either taxes are going to have to go up, or spending is going to have to go down. Thank you Madam Speaker.
Councillor Pasternak to speak?
Thank you, thank you Madam Speaker. I'd like to focus on the rate, because I think that's what's before us, I've heard a lot of other things. I'd like to finish the reading for councillor Perks of the letter that one of my constituents received who fell on hard times because of increasing tax rates and, among other issues. In accordance with, and I won't reveal any confidential information, it's a generic letter, in accordance with the City of Toronto Act 2006, should taxes and related costs remain unpaid and no extension agreement has been entered into one year from the date of the registration of the tax arrears certificate, the municipality is required to dispose of the land in order to recover the debt. Sale of the land can be completed by public auction or tender. Can you imagine getting a letter like that? Can you imagine falling on hard times? Increasing the tax rate is not the answer. We have heard from the people of Toronto, when we send out the tax bills, we enclose within the envelope an option to pay more. And look, they don't. They paid $30,000 across the city in additional voluntary tax increases. And we cannot take this out on the seniors who are on fixed incomes, who want to stay in their home. We want to stay in place aging, it's part of our philosophy, it's part of the Toronto senior strategy. We want to make sure that young people can settle here and own a home and not be taxed out. They can talk about $60 a month, or $5 a month, or $2 a week, or whatever, but what they're not calculating is many of the other expenses that are already on the family household. And this includes exorbitant mortgages, this includes daycare, this includes maintaining a household, it includes various activities that a household participates in, and it could include food. When all is said and done, the last thing working families need in this city for government officials to raise their tax rate above the rate of inflation. I think the big discussion here, the backstory to what we're talking about here, is what happened to us this past year. This council supported road tolls, which is an indirect taxation, which is based on collecting revenue from those who use the gardener and the Don Valley Parkway. And we showed the political will to accept that, and that would have been, that would have started off at $140 million, but it would have probably gone up to $300 or $400 million over a number of years. It's a common, common method for raising tax for infrastructure in Europe and across the United States. And quite frankly, we were let down by the provincial government. I would say that if we're short of cash, that Gord Perks should take his complaints to Queen's Park and say that they really reneged on a promise that we had, that we don't have the tools we need for indirect taxation to make sure we can make ends meet. The other thing is, we finally got a hospitality tax on our hotels, but it comes with a big catch. The first 18 millions we collect have to go to Tourism Toronto to backstop multinational hotel corporations, which is, which is most upsetting. But that being said, I don't think we could support above the rate of inflation tax increases. It takes it out on seniors, it takes it out on young families, and it makes the city increasingly unaffordable.
Councillor Mahavik?
Yes, thank you very much. I thought I would make some comments at this point on the tax rate. And I make them not imagining that we're actually going to change the tax rate, but really to begin or to push a conversation, given that, one, this is an election year, and, B, we're heading into a new four-year term. You know, I think, well, perhaps we could forgive people who make promises of freezing taxes or going to zero. Mayor Lastman made such a promise, Mayor McCallion made such a promise, and then the term after that, they actually went in a completely different direction. Why? Because they had to. At the end of the day, pushing a tax freeze or a tax rate that isn't actually our inflation rate, but is lower than our inflation rate, as shown by staff, it's not something that we can sustain as a city. You know, I've been around a few years, and frankly, I can't remember the last time we asked staff to come in with a budget that takes into account real departmental inflation. It's always been a zero, a minus five, a minus two. I've never seen it be a plus, never seen it be a plus. Now, you could do that for one year, you could do it for two years, you might be able to do it for five years, but you can't do it for 20 years. You can't do it from the early 1990s, which is how long we've been doing it, frankly, across Metro Toronto. So we're in a situation now where, you know what? Our reserves are depleting, our corporate culture feels frozen, and so the kinds of creative things that require initial investments are very hard to come by, because our departments are feeling that they can't, they can't venture into new areas because there just isn't the money. And really, the biggest thing is, is that we can't meet the challenges of today and tomorrow. And I'd say the two big buckets there are housing, we have not a $100 million problem, but we have a multi-billion dollar problem, and on public transit, we have a multi-billion dollar problem as well. And you know, it's not just those of us in political life that are saying it, that was what Joe Penechetti, when he was the CFO and the city manager said, that was what Rob Rossini said when he was the CFO, that's what Cam Weldon said when he was the CFO, and if I'm interpreting the clues right from our current city manager and CFO, they're saying it as well, that we are not on a sustainable plan. So what we need, like if I had a magic wand and I could do it, I would say, "You know what? We need a 1% property tax increase just for housing for the next four years. So let's start in the next term of councils, and over four years, that would raise us $120 million." Then I would take that $120 million on the housing front, and I'd go to the province and say, "You match us, give us $120 million." And then we'd go to the federal government and say, "We want you to match us as well." And then I'd go to the private sector and the faith communities and the social service agencies and say, "How about you put in 5% as well?" That's called stone soup development, actually, if people know that story. It's where no one has anything, but if we put together a little bit from everyone, then we can build something. And I would do the same thing with public transit. Put in some good money, a percent a year for four years, and tell our people honestly that we need this money to develop our city, to meet the needs. So, you know, I think we all know where this budget is going, but I think we need to remember there's an election coming up. And if a candidate is knocking on your door and says, "I'm going to cut your property taxes, I'm going to cut this," then you know what, frankly, fellow Torontonians, I would say to that candidate, "You are not reading the signs at this time. We need investment. We need to build a city that is better than what it is now, and we can't do it on the revenues that we have now." One last point, I'd ask if you could put the slide up, AV folks. That, to me, was the most critical picture from the slide deck. We are spending $172 less per person now than after before eight years of, frankly, austerity and semi-austerity. That equals, for a $2.8 million person community, $481 million. That's if we stayed even.
Thank you.
That's something of the kind of thinking that I think we need to bring to the election and to the new term of council. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you councillor Mahavik. Councillor Davis?
Thank you Speaker. I have a motion. And that is to increase the proposed residential property tax by additional 0.32%. That could allow the city council to fund 9.2 million in programs such as the reduction of childcare fees when it considers the next report 3.2. We are in this awkward situation where we are tackling this budget backwards, and I say this every year, we have to fix this. Why are we debating this? We've already set the tax increase, and that's what happens, that's what happens when we get to the Budget Committee. So, anyway, I've proposed 3.2, which generates 9.2 million, which is the commitment that this council made virtually unanimously to match provincial funding for childcare. And I'll speak more to that when we speak on the next item. I'll also support councillor Perks' motion of 4.2, and I'll support, if that fails, 4%, sorry, and I'll support councillor Leighton's motion of 2.9%. And the reason I will support those increases, and everyone that has come before this council since I have been here, is because I understand that we have a city that is growing, and we have not kept pace with the growth of our population in terms of services. We have a city with deepening inequalities, and we have not kept pace with the programs and services to meet the needs of those people, all our people. And so what have we done in the last couple of years, which has really been something that our finance people, and Josie Lovita is the one that has said year after year, "We need service plans." And so what do we have now? Service plans, where there was consultation, where we listened to our communities, and we came forward with strategies to address the needs and growth in our city. But we haven't been funding them fully. I want to first, and I actually, I meant to, acknowledge right at the outset that there are many, many investments in this budget. And I wanted to thank everyone who was involved in developing it, because I do know how much hard work it is. But we have a senior strategy, we have a childcare strategy, we have a recreation strategy, facilities management, a facilities master plan for recreation, we have an environmental plan. If we are really going to be serious about investing in growth and needs in our city, we cannot continue to pretend we can do it by freezing budgets. How can we build the city we want when we freeze budgets? Now, there is an additional new and enhanced in this budget, quite significant, but the majority of it has come from the provincial government. $56 million for childcare alone from the federal and provincial governments, and what did we put in? Two, when we were supposed to commit 11.2. So I'll speak more about that, and why we should be investing that 3.2% increase when we get to the next report. But what I do know is that this budget is built once again on $77 million of draws from reserves, and that next year, we're starting out again, assuming even with a 2.3% tax increase and an increase in TTC fares, that we will be behind, be behind at the start of that process by 300 million. We have to recognize that the tax rates in the city of Toronto fall far below many other municipalities, both in the GTA and right across the province. We have to do our share. And I hear the councillors who get up and say, "Terrible, it's terrible, I'll never introduce or vote for tax increases." And both the city manager, councillor Campbell, and others said we either have to cut or we have to raise revenue. It's true. It is that simple. But I never see anyone saying, "Yes, I'm prepared to cut housing, I'm prepared to cut the TTC, I'm prepared to cut recreation programs." No, because everyone around this table knows that their communities want those services, their communities need those services, and their communities are lining up by the thousand on wait lists for those services.
Thank you councillor Davis.
We have to step up.
Thank you councillor Davis. Thank you. Councillor Shan?
Thank you Madam Speaker. I find it a bit difficult to have this conversation, because there is this view that we can talk about these rates without talking about the impacts of these rates. And we cannot have the debate on these rates unless we are able to articulate what these rates mean in various parts. So this A versus B, the second part is going to tackle this issue, and the first part is only going to talk about rates is fairly difficult. I support many things in the current budget. In fact, I want to thank all the activists who worked so hard to make sure the transformed TO is funded, almost fully funded, in this budget. It didn't come out of goodwill of few individuals, it came out of collective action of many, many community members that we saw in this council, even within the one-year time that I've been here. Anti-black racism funding, you know, we've talked about this city being unequal in terms of wealth, but this wealth is heavily disproportionately, wealth disparity is disproportionately impacting people of color, and we know that, looking at who lives in places which are considered quote-unquote priority populations. So these are fabulous things that we are able to incorporate into this, A, because we are able to increase the property tax from zero to at least at an inflation level. And I'm glad that we have the two-hour pass transfer in it, because, you know, for many people in Scarborough, going to places of worship, to school, to get groceries, everything, you need to be able to take a public transit, and nothing is walkable in many of these places. So the two-hour transit fare, the income tide fare for TTC, all these are great things that are only happening because we were able to increase the... that are only happening because we were able to increase the property tax by at least inflation. But that's not enough. I also want to say about what's missing, you know, we can, we should be doing much more on the housing and shelter crisis that we are facing today, and we cannot do that just by keeping it at inflation. We cannot do the investment we need to have in childcare just by keeping the thing at inflation. Over the many, many years of underfunding, we are at a stage where we cannot have a drastic increase to meet all these, but we have to start having at least a bit more courage to increase a little bit more than where we are at with respect to inflation. I want to say that I will definitely support Counselor Layton's motion that brings at least an additional of almost $24 million into investing into childcare, into making our parks more accessible and TTC, some support for TTC. I also want to thank Counselor Cressy for his motion, because I think, even though, you know, it's gonna predominantly go to downtown, a core of our city having a vibrant arts scene is very important for the rest of the Toronto. But I'm hoping that this will also shift a little bit more focus on other ways we can support arts in the suburbs, so we can actually figure out ways in which we can partner better to make sure that the arts organizations are somewhat connected across the city. So I'll definitely support Counselor Cressy, in the hope that, you know, in the long run, what he is envisioning will help other suburbs to become, create hubs for art. Social planning Toronto released a report, said promises and promises. When it comes to making, when it comes to wording on visions and plans and so on, we almost see unanimous support. And then when it comes to trying to invest into these plans, we see a gap. So it's very important, you know, we don't do this at every single time, we do it only once during the budget time, but throughout the year, we pass many visions and many strategies that aim to create support for vulnerable populations in our city, and when it comes to budget, we are not making that extra effort to invest a little bit more. It is not a politically popular thing, but at the same time, you cannot be able to sustain this city and provide the services we provide without having that additional support in terms of property taxes. The last thing I want to leave you with is that, you know, in Scarborough, many people feel uncomfortable paying more because the services aren't reaching many populations in Scarborough, and that inequity needs to be addressed. It's very, very important for us to say, you know, many populations in the suburbs feel like they are paying for their share, and they're not getting the services, whether it's shelter, whether it's recreational services, whether it's library services, per capita investment in many of our places is not there. So we can continue to support an increase, but we need to have a real look into the inequities that exist in our city geographically. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is an election budget, it's a Band-Aid budget, but more important, it's an unsustainable budget. And that really concerns me. As long as I've been at City Hall, the administration comes up with the increase before we consult with residents. When we actually bring residents in to consult, we've already made up our minds. We know what the increase will be, and we usually know where the money's going to go. Why don't we change things up? Why don't we go out to consult with residents and say, okay, what would you like? Now, I know we're not, we can't give residents everything they'd like, but talk to residents. We heard from another councillor, why not go to our departments and say, what do you need? Not just to maintain what we're putting out there now for services, but with a growing population, what do we need? We have over 100, I think it's 180,000 students or people on a waiting list for Parks and Rec program. We have about 80,000 families looking for affordable housing. This budget doesn't get us to giving those people what they're looking for, what they need. When we do start actually talking about budget, we know how much we're bringing in, and we have to squish everything we want and we need into that area. It's like trying to put a round peg in a square hole. It's not gonna work. It just isn't going to happen. Two big concerns I have this time round. The MLTT, we are hearing that the property market is going soft. I believe when I first became councillor, we didn't put 100% of what we estimated we'll be bringing in into filling the budget. We'd put a percentage in, and then if we brought in more, we had surplus, and some of that, if I'm not mistaken, went to TTC, and some went to topping up our reserve funds. If we're putting the full amount in, 800 and something million, and we don't bring that in, where's that gap coming from? We've also put over $50 million of reserve money into balancing this budget. I don't know. I have a reserve fund in my family, so if my roof leaks or my boiler blows up, I've got money to go and fix it. Or if my car hits a pothole, but that's another story. I've got money to go and fix it. If we are depleting our reserve funds and we don't have any surplus coming in, how do we fill those reserves? How do we get ready for that rainy day or snowy day, according to whatever the weather's doing? So I think we have actually, I agree, we do this sort of cart before the horse. We should see what the city needs, see what residents need, see what our departments need, then come up with how much money we need to bring in. If we were to actually bring our property tax to the average of a GTA, I think we needed something like a 31.9% property tax increase. Now, obviously, we're not going to do that, no one would do that, but it just shows where our property taxes are in line with everyone else. So yes, my concerns are, the market's gonna drop, that money isn't gonna be there to pay for the services we and residents are expecting. We need to use that reserve fund, and it's not there any longer. So as I say, I don't believe this is a sustainable budget. I am not looking forward to a 2019 budget. Hopefully, I'm here to try and fight for things, but I'm not looking forward to that because we don't have those reserve funds anymore to fill that gap, and we shouldn't be using reserve funds to fill that gap in the beginning. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Carroll to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I couldn't agree with Counselor Dusset more about the fact that residents would really love one day for us to come to them and consult on the city's budget before we've actually launched one. Not only do I agree with her, Toronto's youth agrees with her, the youth cabinet and the Toronto Youth Council, every youth group I meet with says the same thing. We'd like to talk to you before you've already convinced our parents of what their property tax increase would be. Moreover, when I go to my community, they say, isn't this already a done deal? Why do I have to come to a town hall? They really would like to go back to that thing we have not done for a decade of talking to them first. That being said, I'm not so sure that we'd be very good at it at this point. It's been somewhat frustrating and downright sad for me to listen to some of the comments this morning. I love my colleagues, I respect my colleagues, but one of you said, this has been a very easy budget year. Ask any one of these staff members if this has been a very easy budget year.
Sure.
The only thing that was easy for them was to tell us, if you want us to meet the target, we're just gonna hack away, we're not gonna do any of the things you discussed and asked us to add this year. Here it is, nothing sensational, it's last year, minus some retirements, here's your budget. In that respect, it was easy, but are they losing sleep? I dare say they are. So this has not really been an easy budget year. I've heard people demonstrate a real, either a lack of understanding or a lack of willingness to actually be honest about the difference between gross and net. I can't believe that people who have been in office as long as some have, who are trying to demonstrate how terrible our budget is on the basis of the gross, when in fact, all the growth in it is not coming from any decisions you've made, but what other governments have contributed. In terms of major cities in North America, the province is now contributing about what you expect a province or a state to contribute, about 25%. The feds could step up a little more, they're still at 2%, but any growth in your gross budget, save and accept the 400 million that Mr. Parag mentioned, is really coming from other governments, not your decisions. And you either don't know that because you haven't bothered to understand it, or you're not willing to explain it to your residents, and that's the really sad part. There seems to be a lack of understanding of what it means to build something into the base. Not to at the last minute take one-time revenues or risk-based revenues such as MLTT to plug any of the last-minute holes in the budget, but to actually say, here are the things we want in the budget, and they are ongoing services, and if they are ongoing services, we know where they have to come from, that one sustainable piece of revenue that we have, the property tax. There's either a total lack of understanding of what the base budget is, or an unwillingness to either understand it or explain it to your residents. And that is the thing that is going to make you completely and utterly vulnerable to the economy that we're headed for. From the Financial Post, the hottest market in the world, the Toronto housing market, is facing a reckoning. From the Toronto Star, Toronto area housing prices expected to remain flat or in fact decline. From the Globe and Mail, Toronto home sales fall sharply in January, where will it end? Yeah, it's an election year budget, and you'll probably see your June 30th variance report with a massive negative variance in it based on your MLTT assumption of twice what Hemsden told you, twice what Hemsden told you 10 years ago, you should ever assume into your operating budget. You're assuming 800 million, and Hemsden told you never assume into your operating budget more than 400 million unless you've somehow quadrupled the number of rate-paying accounts in this city, and you haven't. So I dare say, in an election year, you're really rolling the dice, because it'll be about September when you find out you've rolled the dice and you've come up with very little to show for it. And that's why that little bit that Counselor Layton is asking you to put in, so that the things you want to add to the budget, and we all agree, including Mr. Mayor this morning at 9 o'clock, we all agree you need to add those things to the budget. Counselor Layton is providing you a motion that will give you a sustainable way to do it in line with inflation and a real and true base budget source for those funds. And if you don't do it, you will have difficulty in your election year unless the real estate market really surprises us.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move an amendment to Counselor Cressy's motion, and simply that I'm just changing the word, notwithstanding in his motion. This is, staff has suggested that we do this, so it's technical in nature, it's the line that's underlined there in the item on the screen. Speaker, I just simply want to rise to speak to the rates, because there's ample opportunity to speak to many other elements as it relates to the capital and operating budget. I've had a number of meetings in my ward regarding budgets and this particular budget, and I have not had a meeting in my ward where anyone has come to me and said, please, please, Counselor Thompson, increase my taxes, please increase my taxes. In fact, what they have said to me is, don't increase my taxes. What we're hearing here is that there is a moderate increase with respect to the rate of CPI, and so I'm going to support that. I realize that certainly if we were as prudent as we were able to be in a manner, where we would not be required to use reserves to help us and so on with respect to balancing the budget. But in all the years that I've been here, I've actually never seen a budget where we've never used reserve to help us to balance the budget. So there are many who've spoken now about the fact that we should be increasing taxes, many who are saying that, well, we shouldn't take any funds from reserves to help us with respect to our budget. I'm not quite sure where I got lost as part of being here for the number of years that I have been here, because I've never seen that. It's not a John Tory or Mayor Tory phenomenon where he's introducing something that we've never done here before, but I think if you listen to a lot of people here, it's as if this is a new phenomenon, this is a new exercise that we're actually going through. The requirement of a city is to ensure that we provide services for our residents and so on. For some people, it's not enough of services, for other people, it's too much and so on. Our job here is to balance interests, and I mean, that's really what our key function here in this particular chamber. And I realize that for some, it's easy to advance the argument that says we should increase taxes and so on, because that would allow us then to do all the things that we're doing. One of the things that I have not heard mentioned here today as part of this particular process, we have many services, we have many offerings that we offer to our residents in the city of Toronto, to help them, to give them a helping hand and so on. I'm not aware, nor should there be simply a system where we continue to simply say, well, you know, you're stuck in your particular condition, we're just going to support that. I think what we ought to advance is the opportunity where we set the bar and standard higher so that people can aspire and achieve great success and so on. The rate may not be, you know, what everybody likes, but I think that, as we have always said, the rate of inflation is an appropriate number. I draw attention to Counselor Mamalidi's comments about the different services that people are paying for and so on. You have an option with respect to garbage, I think that was one of the ones that he highlighted and so on. While you can choose to basically put out less and reduce the actual amount that you dispose of and so on, in fact, you could go down to a very nominal amount or even zero that you actually pay. So you do have some options, and that's really a good exercise for our residents, quite frankly, because then you are doing obviously the three Rs, recycling and reusing, and that I think is a fundamental positive element, Madam Speaker. So I am going to support what's in front of us. The budget process has taken a tremendous amount of time. We've heard from a lot of people and so on, the budget chief and the team and the staff have done an amazing job in terms of bringing forward something that's going to help us. We are still providing the services, we're retaining and hiring more people to provide the services in this city, as well as providing options. People will now have a two-hour transfer opportunity and so on, which is new to us, but has been in business, but it has been in service in New York City for 20 years. I mean, so it works and so on, and there's funding that's been made available for that, Speaker. So I am going to support the rates that we are actually talking about at this time in this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a motion. And that is that items number 7, 8 be deleted, and instead we adopt a different policy, and that is that City Council direct the general manager, EDC, to establish a grant program equal in value to the proposed creative co-location facility subclass tax reduction program to be made available to all eligible organizations as proposed in the program. And I'll speak to that briefly. There's a photo I wanted to show to help illustrate what I think, what I understand is happening, if I can just get clerks to help me with that. So 401 Richmond is in the center of that. Looking on the internet, it looks to be a fantastic place, and I think I understand what's happened around the neighborhood. I've walked past there before. The neighborhood's changed around that. Gentrification is occurring, there's high-rise development, I couldn't zoom out far enough on the picture to show the number of towers. So things have changed, and it's no surprise that the land value has gone up, and subsequently the taxes have gone up. So I understand why council's been seized with some sort of a process to figure out how to reconcile this. And as Counselor Cressy said, there's a couple of schools of thought. The one that's been proposed before us is that we simply clawback and cut back on the taxes. We select this sector, and in many ways, this location, although I understand it benefits a few, but it's gonna benefit this location a lot in the local councillor's ward, and we clawback the taxes. I would offer you a different thought in my motion, and that is to get the money to the organizations in a different way, and that is through the grants process. To me, that's a far more transparent and equitable process. It's a way that people can discuss this issue with what's going on with the cost of existing in that environment. One of the things that came out in questioning was that this tax cut actually helps the landlord, not necessarily the organizations. And I'm not sure that there's necessarily a guarantee that these savings get passed on. And me even more alarming was that some of the people that are located there might be for-profit entities, and those for-profit entities may also benefit from a tax cut. That's what came out in the questioning. So the motion that I've put before you is cost neutral, because it takes the same money that might have been used, I think it came out as $1.2 million in the questioning, and puts it in a different way in a grants process so that these organizations can then apply for the money as needed. If the taxes are going beyond that 10% stop that we talked about and set a council policy on, then we can bring it up and they can have some sort of a relief. So there's that. And I think I'll just make a very simple statement about what we've been talking about right now in this item is just simply fixing a tax rate, trying to fix one that's affordable in this city. We've had proposals for more, we've had proposals for less. I'll just remind members of council that there's many, many revenue streams that bring money money into the city. It's not just the municipal taxes, but it's also the rate base. It's also the hotel tax, the sign tax, the city building levy, the subway levy, and it goes on and on. And I'll even go farther to say, we take a dividend from such organizations as the Toronto Parking Authority and hydro. And I think we raise that dividend in hydro. So in a roundabout way, the city, I think it's $75 million, the city's bringing in money through that dividend, through charges that people pay on a hydro basis. So if everyone thinks that it's just the property tax is what we're hitting our residents for to help pay for operations, they're wrong. The taxes are actually hidden in many, many other places. Sometimes they're not as apparent, sometimes they're not as transparent, sometimes they don't test us when we get that tax bill, they kind of go through in a hidden way. And I think it's important to think about that, about this entire equisphere of money that we take from people. You know, we talked about affordability in the city, and Canada Mortgage and Housing uses an income test to help figure out whether you should be purchasing a home. It's called PIT, or PIF if you include heating, principal, interest, taxes, and heating. Well, we don't have a lot to control on the principal, other than some of the development approvals that we make. The interest is the market, but the taxes are something that the city controls. And if Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation understands that as, you know, a pressure put on a household to help manage living, then I think we should do our part as well by considering the taxes that we charge people. It's not just the property taxes I mentioned, but it's the entire amount of money that we take in, even the municipal land transfer tax, which could be easily calculated and annualized on an average, is a lot of money. Councillors, I hope you think about that and will make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Matlow to speak.
Madam Speaker, we do this every single year, and I just, I've been sitting here all day, and I encourage us, let this be the last budget year that we discuss the rates before the needs and the services. It just seems stupid, irresponsible, and back-asswards to me. It does.
Don't hold back.
Back-asswards. Madam Speaker, I, we keep talking about young families who have to pay for childcare, or seniors who are on fixed pensions, and I can't think of any of my friends or neighbors, and I ask you if you can think of any yourselves, or if you do this in your own budget, where you think, you don't think about what your needs are as far as taking your kid to the dentist, or clothes, or food, or paying the rent or mortgage, or getting your car repaired, or whatever your needs are, before you think about what you need to either bring in as revenue or cut within your budget to be able to make ends meet. I can't imagine that any one of us arbitrarily just picks a number out of the air and then tries to make life work for that number. Yet that's what we're doing now, and this is what we've been doing year after year. Many of us have supported that direction, because it always seemed to be the mayor's prerogative, and, well, you know, that's, the mayor has a privilege under our system to decide on that order. But I respectfully encourage us that if any of us come back next year, that rather than using the technique to pigeonhole whatever our prescribed destination might be with respect to the rate, it is more genuine and sincere to have a debate over what we want to invest in, and perhaps what we want to cut, and what our vision is rather than a number. Focus on a vision for the city, and then pick a number to match it. Now, if that number becomes an inflationary number, so be it. If the number goes above inflation, then that's what we decide we want to invest in. Maybe it's below, who knows? But what we're doing today, I just hate this process. I feel it's not real. It's, it's, we're kind of going through this, this kind of motion today where we're debating something, and we're all talking maybe about childcare, maybe about housing, or, you know, maybe about poverty, or maybe about environment, or maybe about, I mean, even the little things to the big things that impact your lives, like how many bylaw enforcement officers do we have to deal with noise complaints, or, or, as councillor Aujer Mary said, snow removal and window clearing, or life and death issues, like respite centers and housing. I mean, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about numbers in a vacuum, and it just doesn't sound, it's not logical. And it's not like anyone would do that in the real world. So why are we in a bubble? Why aren't we acting like the real world? Why don't we make a budget like any family, any individual would do in their own home? Because we are supposed to be the reflection of their priorities. But we're not talking about priorities, we're talking about numbers. Let's set our priorities, let's match it with numbers, and let's invest in Toronto in a way that actually meets the needs.
Thank you. Councillor Wong-Tam.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to rise and thank city staff for all their exceptional work in putting together this budget. I recognize that this is not necessarily easy, especially as every year we're asking not just the divisional heads who lead the public service to do more and more with less and less, but rather it's one where we're asking frontline staff to deliver more and more services with less and less, and it's really them that I want to say thank you to, even though we don't hear from them, not necessarily in these type of formal settings, and certainly not at the standing committees, but I think that we are seeing the fatigue on their faces as they're being asked to respond to growing populations, very complex urban issues, trying to make sure that the service levels are there, and it is becoming increasingly tough. I also want to thank the Budget Committee for the hours of work that they put in, in terms of trying to make sure that they put forth a balanced budget for us to consider. And I know that it's thankless work, you're oftentimes being lobbied from various sides of the political spectrum, and I appreciate that, to be quite honest, and councillor Crawford, who's always just been so approachable in the way he handles every single concern. This is a very difficult budget in some ways, largely because of some of the statements that have already been made by colleagues on the floor, Madam Speaker, but I do find that there is, there is a bit of manufacturing here that takes place, which leaves me somewhat troubled, not because it's not a political budget, and certainly it is, but in terms of the values that we talk about and what we want to do and how we want to build the city, I'm very troubled that we say one thing and we do another, and then by the sleight of hand, something else materializes, and, look, we've saved the day, but there's some things that are left off the budget, and now we have to go off and fight for it. So it is very, very confusing, especially for those who are not deep embedded in the process, who are not at the front lines of every single discussion, but I would say that it's actually not as honest as I think it needs to be, and we want to operate only in the light, and we want to make sure that we're accountable, because we're dealing with public dollars. But Madam Speaker, I want to just highlight a couple of things. In 2016, 2017, and I will again in 2018, move motions supporting gender-responsive budgeting. It'll be the third time that I will have to do this, Madam Speaker, and, Madam Speaker, you'll probably notice that throughout the entire budget process, very little was discussed on the issue of equity, very, very little. And certainly, almost no language came up talking about how gender equity plays into this budget, and how it translates into services that will make the lives of women and girls and their families easier. And I'm not talking about luxury, I'm just talking about a quality of living that everyone can anticipate. But yet, at the same time, Madam Speaker, when we hold budget town halls in War 27, I don't get 20 or 30 people coming out, which I understand are fairly decent attendance numbers by every account in any ward in the city. I get 150 to 170 people coming out to our budget town halls, because we say we're going to put a gender lens over the work that we do, and we actually frame the discussions around equity. So interestingly enough, I know that we have the most well-attended town halls in the city. I know that these residents are coming from across the city, because they're not all War 27 residents, but we're actually able to set the discussion table that actually allows everyone to participate. And the things that they talk about, Madam Speaker, is that they do not want to have women and girls bear the burden of poverty. And yet, Madam Speaker, that's exactly what is happening. And they also want to make sure that we do the very best we can to make sure that women and girls and their families are going to have equal opportunity to economic prospects, and prosperity is going to be shared by all. Our last budget town hall, which focused on gender-responsive budgeting, we had the Minister of Finance come in to speak, and he talked about the work that they're doing in Ottawa to make sure that they put an intersectional gender lens over their operating capital budgets. And so interestingly enough, Madam Speaker, I recognize that we're actually having different orders of government before us that are exploring the concept of gender-responsive budgeting. And yet, here at City Council, where we have adopted this motion in 2016, 2017, and hopefully 2018, we still haven't gone far enough, and I'd like us to do that again. But next time, we're going to do the work for real. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fletcher to speak.
Yes, I do have a motion, Speaker, and if it's not ready, perhaps you could move to councillor.
Is councillor Fletcher's motion ready? They don't have it, councillor Fletcher.
I'd sent it to...
How did you send it?
Marilyn, is she not there?
Marilyn's not here.
Not here. There you go. I'll have to resend that to the centre table and let councillor Shiner speak.
Councillor Shiner.
Madam Speaker, that's okay. You know, I rise, I rise because I think that some of us forget who we're representing and the ability of those that we're representing to pay. And I say that because there's quite a number of motions that, as in previous years, say, "Well, just raise the tax rate, half a percent, 1% more." It's not a lot, it's not a lot. Well, we've seen what happened with the housing industry, just by a quarter percentage point increase, or half a percentage point increase in interest rates, or the requirement to get a greater down payment on a house. And we look at those houses, and those prices now are running close to 800, 900,000, that's the average house. And staff, when I asked them the question, I said, "So what is the, how many of the homes that we have are assessed at under $1 million, and what do they assess that?" And I was told there's 680,000 homes under $1 million. There's 81,000 between 1 and 2 million, and 15,000 homes over $2 million. That means the average person in the city of Toronto is living in a house that we try to consider an affordable price, and those people cannot afford more. And when I hear comments from some of my colleagues, "Well, decide what you need and then set the tax rate." You can't do that. We have a responsibility to see what people can afford, and cost of living increase itself is a burden on some, and in fact, the residential tax owner doesn't get a cost of living increase. He gets one that's almost 40% more because of the fact we can't raise the commercial and we can't raise the multi-res.
Thank you.
So I think the process we've gone through is right. I think the budget number is the best we can do. I think that we have to try to keep the city as affordable as we can. I think any of these motions that were there for additional money in there is not looking at what the issue is, because we have a finite amount of money. And that's what we're setting now, is what is the rate that we're going to have in a tax rate? We have a finite amount, and after that, if you want to move it around between different priorities, you can do that. But if you put the wish list on the table, which is what some want, that wish list never ends. And if you don't think of the taxpayers, which are those that you're responsible for, and their ability to pay, which is what we're doing now by setting a tax rate, you're not being responsible to the people that elected you. So I'm not supporting any amendments to the rate. I think cost of living, which is what we tell them, is more than enough because of legislation where 40% more than cost of living, almost a 3% tax increase, that is more than substantial that most people can carry. People are struggling to afford a house in the city, and you don't think about them when you think that you want to, and suggest that we raise taxes higher. You're not thinking about the ability to pay. You're not thinking about the people that are paying the taxes, and you're not thinking what the majority of taxpayers in the city of Toronto want.
Do we have councillor Fletcher's motion?
It's on the next one.
It's on the next item. Oh, okay. Councillor Fletcher to speak, then.
I will, and I'll address that, and I think it's the same as councillor Aujer Mary, that it's very hard to tie certain things together. And why I thought this could be under this area is that our rate could be adjusted, or perhaps even be lower, if we actually had what we deserved from the other levels of government. In particular, the questions I asked earlier, which I know I was straying, but they really are associated with the rate. We used to have a 50% operating subsidy for the TTC before amalgamation, and it got dropped. I know we've moved motions before to reinstate that, but I don't think we've done that with much gusto. And I actually think we have to stop saying, "Your fare is going up," although it isn't this year, but we have to actually go back to the senior levels of government and insist that two big things that got downloaded onto the taxpayers, the property taxpayers of this city, that being housing and that being transit, it just isn't on anymore. Why should that be? Why should we get a whole portfolio of Ontario housing downloaded and somehow just go along with that for 20 years, along with that, for 20 years, being good little boys and girls, and not raising bloody hell? Because how did that happen with that download? How do we have a transit system that moves millions of people to their work every day, and that everyone in Toronto clambers for more transit? We need more transit. The business community says more transit. Residents say more transit. And we have a system that 20 years ago, people stopped paying half of, and say, "Okay, taxpayers, you pay for it." Something's wrong with how acquiescent we are on that. And now we're fighting over, will it be 4%? Will it be 2.9%? Will it be 3.2%? But you know what? If we look at all the taxes that leaves this city and goes to the federal government, or leaves this city and goes to the provincial government, do you really think that we're getting back what we need in order to move the legions of people that need to be moved around this city? Or the legions of people that live in our social housing portfolio in this city like no other city in Ontario, like no other city in the GTA? The number of shelter beds we're asking for, I'm sorry. I didn't hear Mississauga asking for 1,000 beds, or Ajax asking for 1,000 beds, or Vaughan asking for 1,000 beds up near the new subway. I hear people in Toronto saying, "We need 1,000 beds," because people are in this city. So we have to stop being so darn nice and just say, "Okay, we'll take the 50%, go ahead, take it away. Oh, we'll pay for all the housing that you built, some of it not very well and needs tremendous amount of repair." This is the year for us to say, and to help citizens say, "Pay your fair share," provincial government. Now, I couldn't move that here, but that will be part of my speech under the next section. We have to step up, my friends.
Councillor De Giorgio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will try to be brief in my comments, and let me begin by complimenting, first of all, the Budget Committee and councillor Crawford and staff for doing what I believe is an excellent job in coming forward with the recommendations that they put forward to Budget Committee, and then ultimately approved by the Executive Committee. So by and large, I will be supporting the recommendations of the Executive Committee with perhaps one minor other motion that I will support that was put forward by councillor Cressy, notwithstanding that I don't agree 100% with what's happening downtown. I think it is a unique situation that needs to be looked at in the context of creating a subclass. It is a sustainable budget. I think that's one of the objectives that has been really a foundation of the Budget Committee over the tenure of... Committee over the tenure of Mayor Tory. He's always reiterated the fact that we have to proceed at a rate that is sustainable, is responsible, and I think is the Budget Committee has kept within that framework. There are a number of things that are very important that people sometimes forget, and that is, one of the things that they forget is that there's a relationship between a capital investment and an operating impact. And one of the things that the budget process allows you to see is that a lot of the capital investments are financed out of current budget to the tune of 10%, which means that the remaining portion of that capital investment has to be financed through debt. And so, people keep talking about debt charges and the fact that debt charges go up and keep going up. The reality of the fact is you cannot eliminate debt charges if you choose to make investments of a capital nature. If you choose, and we've done this in the past, by the way, if you say, you know, we're going to delay making capital investments for five years, 10 years, then you can get away from increasing debt service charges, or at least stabilize debt service charges. But you pay a price for that. So, that being said, what I'm suggesting is that you not be overly alarmed by increasing debt service charges. I can tell you that we can get rid of the debt service charges very quickly. All we have to do is to have everybody, and I've said this many times in the past, have all property owners essentially pay one lump sum equivalent to whatever property taxes they're paying on an annual basis. In other words, if they make a lump sum payment of twice their annual property taxes, all of a sudden, the debt disappears. And theoretically, the debt service charges disappear. Unfortunately, unfortunately, you have to commit to that philosophy, as we won't make capital investments going forward. We're going to finance everything out of operating. And the reality is, you won't be able to do that. So it is a system that there are inbuilt sort of control mechanisms that basically force us to say, we have to keep an eye on affordability. We have to keep an eye on how much can people actually absorb going forward, and I think councillor Shiner alluded to that fact quite eloquently. And we need to make some judgment calls with respect to setting priorities. We cannot meet all demands. That's why the structural gap exists, by virtue of the fact that the demands that are placed upon us exceed the revenues that are available to us on an annual basis. And the demands keep growing up. The envelope for services demanded by our citizens keeps growing, and therefore, the revenue that we need to generate keeps growing. And so, that structural gap, very difficult to eliminate. So I'm not going to say much more, Madam Chair, other than to say that I hope that the majority of councillors do support the recommendations recommended, or at least adopted by the Executive Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crawford?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. More police officers, new bus drivers, traffic wardens, hop-on, hop-off, two-hour transfers, TTC fare freeze, fare, fare pass for low-income residents, millions more to the TTC, full support of our 2018 poverty reduction strategy, full support of the Transform TO strategy for this year, more shelter beds, more childcare spaces, more subsidies, 20,000 more recreation spaces, additional youth hubs, enhanced Sunday service for many of our libraries. The auditor general is getting more money to look for savings across the system. We are living up to our $25 dollar per capita arts funding commitment. There's $170 million more for capital in this budget for an ongoing basis. Over 90% of all the new and enhanced items that came to budget from across council over the last year are in this budget. And we've achieved all of that. We've achieved all of that with keeping property taxes low at the rate of inflation. So to suggest that we need to raise taxes beyond the rate of inflation to invest in the city, I'm sorry, that's not correct. We've shown what we have been able to do last year, and not only that, the last three years. So four years in a row, we've kept this city affordable for the residents, at the same time investing millions of upon millions into important services. Our fiscal health is strong. As staff mentioned, with the rating agencies, Standard and Poor's have stated such that we have a very strong fiscal outlook. Our reserves are very healthy, and we replenish them every year with the surpluses that we get, upwards of over $100 million minimum every year to replenish the surpluses. Our debt ratios are reasonable for a city our size. Toronto is a robust and growing city, and yes, we benefit from that in this budget. There is assessment growth that adds to that. There is the MLTT. I understand that we actually benefit from that. We have to be cautious with the MLTT, absolutely, but there are contingencies in place in this budget if something happens. And I'm confident that the staff have been prudent enough to be able to recommend to us that. This is a prudent, fiscally responsible budget with a fiscally responsible property tax increase. It's 2.1%. We invest in this city, and that's what I will be supporting. I won't be supporting any other motions other than what Executive Committee has done. I also want to talk a bit about process, the budget process. We have a very detailed and thorough process that, you know what, is going to be starting the day after we get this budget passed, probably tonight, maybe tomorrow. That's when that budget process starts. You know when it starts? It starts with staff going out into their individual divisions. It also starts here, this chamber, with all the committees and all the committee work that we're going to be doing over the next number of months, because that will populate all the information that's going into the budget process for 2019. You look at our poverty reduction strategy. Where did that come from? It came from a decision we made here. We moved it to the budget cycle, and we are now supporting and funding it. Transform TO, the same thing. Where did the decision made? It was made here. That was a priority. We put that to the budget process, and we are now supporting 100% of that. That's the process we have been following. But I'll begin with the process that we started budget. We have a thorough process that started just before Christmas and just afterwards. The committee, the Budget Committee, the amount of work that they've done, we go through informal reviews where we meet every division and every agency across the city. And then the city staff bring us their budget, and then we go through it again out in public. Every councillor in this room has an opportunity to come and be part of that process. If you were not part of that process this year, you should not be commenting on how flawed it may have been, because you had that opportunity to be here. Councillor Perks, I'm glad you were there. Councillor Davis, we're there all the time. But if you had the audacity to say it's a flawed process and you weren't part of the process, I'm sorry, I don't accept those remarks. We have an incredibly important process that we have been following, and I want to thank all the councillors for doing that. And again, it's a tough process, but you know what? It's a fair process. And we bring, it's a lot of work. We have over 53, 54 agencies and divisions across this city. We need to bring a lot of information together here, and we do that. We do it in a process that I think is fair. I will also, by the way, be supporting councillor Cressy's motion with the Creative Co-location Facilities Property Tax subclass with his 50% reduction. Now, understanding that we will move and will probably support this, I'll be supporting this. But again, understanding that it has to go to the province and they actually have to support it too. The hope is they do, but it's really up to the province once we make the decision. So, Madam Speaker, thank you very much, and I'll be supporting the Executive Committee recommendations.
Thank you. So if we can... That's it for the speakers. So if we can ring the bells. Okay, members, our first motion, we'll put it on the screen. It's motion number one by councillor Perks. Recorded vote.
Councillor Crissanti, please.
The motion does not carry. The vote is nine to 33.
Okay, motion to reopen on favor, carried. Okay, let's do it again. Please watch those fingers. Recorded vote.
The vote is eight to 34.
Our next motion is motion number two by councillor Mamalidi. Recorded vote.
Councillor McMahon.
Councillor Crissanti, please, and councillor Holland, please. The motion does not carry. The vote is five to 37.
Our next motion is motion number four by councillor Layton. Recorded vote.
The vote is 13 to 29.
Our next motion is motion number five by councillor Davis. Recorded vote.
The vote is 14 to 28.
Motion six by councillor Thompson. It's amending, motion number three by councillor Cressy. Recorded vote.
Councillor Peruzzi.
The amendment carries 36 to 6.
Motion number three by councillor Cressy, as amended by councillor Thompson. Recorded vote.
The motion as amended carries 36 to 6.
Okay, so that means that councillor Holliday's motion is amended. On the item, recorded vote. Item is... So we're on the item now. Recorded vote.
Councillor Layton, please. Thank you. Councillor Shiner.
The item as amended carries 31 to 11.
Okay, so we've completed one item. So before we proceed to the debate on item EX 31.2, I'd like to remind you that we have adopted the tax rates and the revenues they will generate under item EX 31.1. That means that motions that affect the tax rates and the amounts to be levied will not be in order during this debate. Any motion that proposes an amendment to the levels of expenditure must also provide an offsetting amount. I would also like to address a matter that arose during last year's budget debate and give some guidance to members. Under council's procedures, if a matter contains distinct propositions, a member can ask that council take a separate vote. If the chair agrees that the matter can stand alone, a separate vote can be taken. You will recall that during the voting on the 2017 budget, a request was made to conduct a separate vote on the transportation services budget as it pertained to street sweeping reductions. The vote on that motion lost, if you remember. So as the balanced budget before council included the street sweeping reductions, that lost vote resulted in an unbalanced budget, which is not permitted by law. By council's solution was to waive its rules to permit a member to place a late motion to identify an offsetting source of funds to balance the budget. I wish to avoid a similar circumstance in this year's budget. With the exception of those portions of the budget where members have declared interest, I will not entertain a request to vote separately on a portion of the budget if a lost vote would result in an unbalanced budget, as this means the proposition does not stand alone. If a member wishes to delete or change something in the budget, they should place a motion to amend the budget and identify an offsetting source of funds where necessary. I will ask the city clerk to distribute my ruling so that all members will have a copy. Point of order?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Mininwa?
However, if one wants to cut something out of the budget, one does not have to have an offset if one just generally wants to reduce the budget. Not that it would happen in here. Not that it would happen in here. But you can't, you need, if you want to...
Yeah, you can direct it to another source.
No, no, but can't you just...
Well, you don't want to direct it anywhere.
No, no, just send it back.
Oh, send it back where?
To the taxpayers? I know that's a really unusual idea in this place.
Yeah, no, we just set the tax rate.
You don't spend it, you can just...
Okay. Point of order, Counselor Mamalidi.
I'm sorry, did you just rule that we cannot reduce the budget?
No, I didn't say that. What I said is that if there's a motion for that, let...
You would allow the...
Bring it to the staff, but if you reduce it, we've already set the tax rate.
I get that, but if, I'm on mine. Counselor Perks, can you just hang on a sec? If I wanted to move a motion to reduce a particular part of the budget, you'll allow that motion to be voted on?
Yes, as long as you provide, if you do a reduction, then you have to, you have to indicate where you want those funds to go.
So, if I wanted to return to the taxpayer, I'd have to say that?
We've already had a tax rate. Yeah.
Sorry?
We've already set the tax rate, Counselor Mamalidi.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out how to place my motions, so...
Well, why don't you place it and then we can deal with it when you place it?
Because I don't want it to be ruled out of order for one or two words. Is it, will you allow me to reduce the budget in some areas? And if so, what, if I were to, do I got to send it somewhere? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but until you move a motion, Counselor Mamalidi, I can't rule on your motion. So, let's just move along and we'll see what happens. Okay? Okay, questions? Counselor Carroll.
Yes, maybe we can just sort this out, Madam Speaker. If I could ask the CFO, if there's anything I don't like in this budget and I want to take it out, what reserve should I direct the now additional funds to in my motion?
So, my suggestion would be the Tax Stabilization Reserve Fund.
That's a great suggestion, thank you. I have no other questions on the budget, having followed the process.
So, do we, we're at questions now, yes? Do we, Counselor Davis?
I did just want to, as I indicated earlier, I wanted to ask some further questions about childcare. What is the range of fees? In the average and probably, for some people, the highest fees that they're paying in childcare in the city of Toronto?
For infants, the average is eighty-five dollars a day. The highest is a hundred and six dollars and ninety cents a day.
And what's that annually, if you happen to be paying a hundred and six a day?
It's over twenty-seven thousand dollars per animal, so almost twenty-eight.
And the average, then, if you're paying the average fees for an infant, what's that?
Oh, that would be, I didn't do that, that would be about twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand a year. So, the proposal that is before us, which has some new money to reduce fees, would reduce fees in the top third. So, we're talking about people who are already paying, what, between...
For an infant?
Twenty-two and twenty-seven hundred...
Thousand a year? That's correct, yes.
So, if I had the fee reduction that's contained in this budget, and I was paying twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, how much relief would I feel from this budget?
You would feel about sixteen hundred dollars over the course of a year. That's achieving a five percent reduction.
So, the average infant fee is, according to the last study that was done nationally, was sixteen hundred a month. So, if we were going to reduce five percent on average, that family would be saving how much?
For the average fee?
Fifty, a hundred and sixty-five divided by two, eighty-three dollars. Eighty-three dollars a month.
Yes, I'll remind you through the chair that the study that we had done on demand and affordability said that fees would have to reduce over ten years by between twenty-five and forty percent to have a material impact on demand.
Well, it didn't say it had to be reduced over ten years. It said, if I may correct you, that it had to be reduced forty to fifty percent in order to have any kind of impact on demand.
That's correct, twenty-five to forty percent.
And that study said very, very clearly, we cannot continue to just grow the childcare license capacity and add fee subsidies for the lowest income families if we don't address overall affordability, because people just won't be able to afford it after we create how many new spaces?
About seven thousand new spaces.
So, if we don't address affordability by reducing the fees almost fifty percent, by the time we add seven thousand spaces, we may find ourselves where we just are not serving at all the families that are now having children.
Yes, the study did confirm that it's the middle-income families that would likely be squeezed out of the system.
So, one of the proposals, and the reason I tabled the point three-two increase, was to add some additional funding to match the commitment we made when we approved the growth strategy, and that was to match the federal and provincial contributions by twenty percent. That's correct, so this year it was supposed to be, how much?
Eleven point two million is the twenty percent.
And then, we got more money than we had anticipated in the first year, and I know that's why there was a great deal of pressure to spread it out. But technically, we were to add eleven point two. Right now, how much of that fifty-six million dollars? Actually, we got fifty-six million from the federal and provincial governments. We should have put in eleven point two. How much did we put in? This year?
This year, we've put in two million but have committed to the eleven point two over three years.
And there's no guarantee, obviously, that next year we'll have a council that is going to commit to that. We're not bound by that in any way, right?
A component of that is going to a capital project, the Anishwabi Childcare Centre, which will require a commitment to fund the full cost.
So, if we were to look at that capital project and say, let's fund that capital project out of the capital budget, how much money could we free up then to put in to address subsidies or affordability this year?
That project is five point six million dollars.
Okay, so that's funded from the operating budget?
Thank you, Counselor Davis, your time is up. Thank you. Counselor DeBermaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, Madam Speaker, to our deputy city manager. Independent of this great big giant budget that we have before of us, you've been working in my ward as facilities and real estate to fix some of, one of our industrial units so that the autistic centre can move into that building?
Through the speaker, that's correct.
And you're aware that the projects had increasing costs because we had to change the sprinkler system? We had to make sure the washrooms and the doors were OADA compliant?
That's correct.
And normally, you would have done that through a variance process that would go into Budget Committee and then Council. Is that correct? But because the project's going to be completed before you can report to the next variance report, we actually have to move the motion today.
That is correct.
And are you supportive of that motion?
Yes, we are.
And maybe to Mr. Farag as well, Chief Financial Officer, you're comfortable and support the motion to finish the repairs to the city's industrial unit that the autistic centre is going to move into?
Yes, it's going to be funded from a reserve that's an appropriate reserve for that purpose.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wong-Tam?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And through you to our general manager of SSHA, with respect to the number of respite beds that were opened during these winter months, how many additional new respite's were open in total?
Through the chair, six hundred and sixty.
And were they fairly quickly filled up as each facility rode out when you did have them open?
Through the chair, yes, they were at the peak of demand, filled up fairly quickly.
And you've made accommodations to do the best that you can by council direction and dipping into some of the reserves to pay for the operating expenses, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
And with respect to the number of non-shelter beds that were used as of February the eighth, I think the shelter census report said about seven hundred and eighty-seven in total as of February the eighth. It was on the website, just want to confirm this with you.
I'm not aware of those numbers.
It's a combination of the warming facilities, the twenty-four hour drop-in, the out-of-the-code program and the winter respite's.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And with respect to the, even the preliminary budget that was first released and what were the recommendations that were placed forward, some of that has now changed, especially after public participation and the request for additional services, but also through the budget process. We've seen some movement on adding additional beds and adding additional services. Is that not correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
But even though with those amendments and requests for enhanced services, we do not have in this budget before us, as proposed, the executive committee recommended budget, we don't have necessarily all the numbers, all the funds set aside to open one thousand brand-new permanent beds in 2018. Is that correct?
Through the chair, and the briefing note identifies a three-year plan for the one thousand shelter beds as well as the GSR replacement beds and the five sites, other sites for this year, and the seven hundred respite sites.
And, but it would be safe to say that the thousand new permanent beds that we pretty much do need is that if we deliver it over three years, it may be, it may not be as fast as we need them, considering the demand for the respite and non-emergency beds right now.
Through the chair, the staff are expediting that plan as quickly as we feel is possible, and we are using other mechanisms available to us, such as motel beds, to provide, to continue to provide service.
But if, because city council is not meeting for about six months, by the time we draw an end to our July meeting till the time we come back in the 2019 cycle in January, February, if you are able to secure those one thousand beds by finding those new facilities, you don't have enough money in the 2018 budget now to secure those new facilities and retrofit them, do you?
Through the chair, that is correct. The briefing note does identify a three-year strategy.
So, if we were to empower you to do what I believe is the will, what I believe is the intention is to, over a period of time, build those one thousand new beds, then we have to give you at least the money to do so, so you're not hamstrung for six months while we go into election campaign mode.
Through the chair, that's a fair statement.
Because we won't even be able to come back and talk about the variance reports because council won't be meeting in the third quarter. Correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
So, therefore, if we really are serious about building one thousand brand-new permanent beds in 2018, then we have to make an amendment in this budget that will allow you to have the funds necessary should those opportunities arise, and I know that you are actively and aggressively scouring the real estate markets right now for those real estate opportunities.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. With respect to the out-of-the-code programs, which we know is the faith-based program, we've asked that perhaps there might be some discussions with those communities about extending their program beyond April the fifteenth. Do you think that's likely, considering where they are with their capacity of service delivery so far?
Through the chair, fantastic group of volunteers. My understanding from the past is that that has not been a possibility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wong-Tam. I have Counselor Crisanti next, and so far, last questioner, unless there are any other questions. Last warning. Counselor Crisanti.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, back to my questions on the TPS from our police service. So, just want to confirm the total operating budget. It's in the report. I believe the net budget is about nine hundred and ninety-seven million. Is that correct? The net, who will answer that? Maybe Joe?
Counselor Crisanti, there's a lot of chatter. If you were directing a question to senior staff here, I'm going to start your time over. Questions of staff right now. Counselor Davis, can we clear the, Counselor Davis? Can we clear the way, Counselor Crisanti's asking questions of the staff?
So, I was...
I'm going to start your time again, Counselor Crisanti.
Thank you. So, I was just asking the confirmation of the operating budget for Toronto Police Service. I believe it says here the net operating budget is about nine ninety-seven?
That's correct, Counselor.
Who answered that?
Right here.
All right, thank you. Does that include, can you tell me what the current complement of officers is? What does it include in terms of total number of officers?
Right now, our complement is probably around forty-nine hundred. But during the year, we'll have an average complement in eighteen of about forty-eight seventy.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part.
It'll be about forty-eight seventy on average through the year because people leave, and then we also are hiring about eighty officers, if not, probably another forty, so about a hundred and twenty officers in 2018.
Okay. Do you know how many officers have actually left the force since the implementation of the modernization plan? About eighteen months ago, total number of officers?
It's probably about, since 2016, when the TTF started, we're looking at separations of about three hundred and fifty officers.
And do you have a breakdown in how many lost due to attrition and other reasons?
There would be, it would be separations due to retirements, to resignations, and to moving into other services. Probably about ten percent, probably about fifteen percent of those actually left to go to another service on average over that time period.
Fifteen?
Percent.
Percent, okay. And how many officers have we hired, did we hire last year? Do you hire any new officers in 2017?
In 2017, we had a class of twenty who are currently at the Ontario Police College Training, and they'll be on the street in May of 2018. And then, we have classes of thirty and thirty in both April and August. And we're actually, the chief is looking at augmenting both those classes by about another total of forty officers. So, we're looking at a total of about a hundred and twenty by January of 2000, or December thirty-first of 2018.
So, a hundred and twenty new officers by the end of this year?
Yes.
And how many are you projecting we're going to lose by the end of this year? So, this, yeah.
Yeah, so we're budgeting a hundred and sixty separations. Right now, we are tracking ahead of that. But that's where we are continually monitoring our separation so that we can take corrective action to ensure that we're actually managing the separations as they occur. So, that might mean that if we start losing a lot more officers than we anticipated, then certainly, we would go to the chief and the board to see if we can hire more officers in 2018.
But are you not already in a situation where we're already losing more officers than projected and anticipated two years ago?
So, in 2017, we projected a hundred and sixty would leave. Actually, we lost two hundred and thirty-two. So, we've taken corrective action already by hiring another eighty and now another forty. So, we're actually mitigating that loss by hiring in 2018. We weren't projecting to hire any in eighteen, but now we've taken steps to do that.
All right, and I think you said we did not hire any officers last year at all?
Yeah, we just had a class in December. Other than that, there wasn't any officers.
So, a hundred and twenty for this year. But how long does it take to hire and train these officers so they're available for full service, independent service, including field training? How long does it take, you know, to get them on the road and working independently?
So, to get them on the road, you're looking at around four and a half months between the training at the college, as well as the training that we go through at our college. And then, they work with a coach officer for about nine months. And if they pass that probation, then they're on the road. But they're actually working officers four and a half months after they go into the class. So, the December people, the December class will actually be on the road in May.
In May, working...
Working.
Field training.
Yes.
With another officer.
Yep. And they'll be on priority response because we've now moved them into actually priority response, responding to calls, as opposed to our community and neighborhood officers.
So if I add up all the numbers correctly, I think we're still going to fall short of the 4,750 unless we continue and ramp up the hiring process.
Our target is 4,750 by 2019. We'll continue to monitor separations to ensure that we don't go below that, and in fact, if it, if there's an accelerated separation, then we'll take action to ensure that we mitigate that loss.
Okay. And just my last question, can you tell me a little bit about how we're progressing and the new model of proactive community policing? How's that coming along? Because it's certainly not visible in areas that I've seen.
So one of our deputies who's now responsible for community and neighborhoods, he's actually has a plan that's going to be going before the chief in command in April, and I see, I think you'll see after that, you'll see a lot more visibility in terms of some of the programs that we're going to be rolling out.
So it's imminent.
Last question, Counselor Crisanti.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leighton.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Deputy Speaker. Just first, to transportation, if I could, who's here from transportation? Jim Baxter, I'm coming to you next, so don't go far. I want to ask a question about snow clearing on sidewalks. Okay, then while you're, sorry, I should have come and told you. I'll ask Mr. Baxter a couple of questions first. So, Mr. Baxter, there were a couple of differences between what your division asked for for transform TO in 2017 and in 2018, and there's a couple in particular, but I just wanted to go through them. The Better Buildings Partnership is unfunded by, or the difference is about $1 million to what was listed in the 2017 ask and the 2018 ask. Can you explain why we're not able to activate that money quicker?
Actually, the Better Buildings Partnership in 2018 will add seven people, and in 2019, next year, we will add six people. So basically, we believe it's funded as we had originally presented it.
So there's $1 million in the proposed budget for 2018? This is the difference, is the estimated cost in 2018 in the staff report was 1.8 million.
Counselor Leighton, I'm just going to stop you before you get the answer. There's a lot of noise coming from behind the speaker's chair. Before I hand it back to her, she needs some quiet to hear the speakers and questioners. Go ahead, Counselor.
Counselor, through you, Madam Speaker, the $1 million difference is primarily a staffing issue. We anticipated originally in the 2016 report that all staff would be in place by the end of 2018, but because we've rejigged the work plan, the, there are staff that are starting in 2019, and then a number of the staff that are starting in 2018, we're only asking for...
Certain number of months.
Certain, certain months of salary, not the full.
So the rest of that investment comes in 2018. The leveraging the Live Green funding, there's $330,000 that is unaccounted for between what was originally assumed would happen and what is being proposed, and is that the same? We're not able to spend the money this year because we, the motions haven't been put in place?
Yes, that is part of the reason, and it's also because we did reallocate some staffing in other areas to accommodate the...
What other areas?
So in the tower renewal initiative.
So we took staff off of tower renewal to go into Live Green, or?
No, no, sorry. We're talking about, sorry, I'm mixing up, apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
I thought you were talking about the Live Green within the context that they help in high-rise programming?
No, just the Live Green in general. It was $600,000 in the staff report for 2018.
Sorry, I apologize. Then, yes, it is entirely the staffing delay.
Okay. And then lastly, the community engagement activities were only funding about halfway. Should I assume that it's also because we're not ready to hire the staff?
So it's company, it's the staffing and then the non-salary dollars, but we want to put the staffing in place before we move forward with the non-salary dollars.
So had the city moved forward in the 2017 budget with the full investment, would we be in a position to better activate and initiate all of this now in 2018?
I think that's a fair assumption.
So the rejigging that was mentioned is a rejigging as a result of our failure to fully invest in the 2017. This is the ripple. This is the ripple.
Let's go with ripple.
Let's go with ripple. Let's, there's a rejigging and there's a ripple. Thank you very much. On the sidewalk clearing of transportation are ready, so sidewalk clearing happens where?
Through you, Madam Speaker, primarily in the Toronto and the East York District, where there is currently, my apologies, mechanical sidewalk clearing, if that's what you're referencing.
Yes.
Happens throughout the city where the sidewalks are wide enough that the tractors can maneuver through the sidewalks.
The windrow clearing, where does that happen?
So the windrow clearing, again, that happens throughout the city where it's feasible, where the clearing of the windrow would not run into issues where there's vehicles that are parked on the side.
Literally run into issues.
Correct.
Could I get a, what is the windrow cost? I know you know that because it's listed every year. The windrow clearing cost.
Well, through you, Madam Speaker, it's actually a combined cost.
Of both the sidewalks and windrows? That would be very helpful.
Well, the sidewalk clearing component, which is the sidewalks and the bus stop, accounts for approximately 20% of the $90 million annual budgeted funds.
And can you tell me really quickly what it would cost to include all of the rest of the sidewalks in the downtown that aren't mechanically cleaned?
That was your last question.
Through you, Madam Speaker, to answer that question, it would cost approximately $3.4 million additional dollars, plus the manual crews that would be required to be about approximately another $10 million.
Thank you. Counselor Mamalidi.
I just want to explore staffing again, if someone can answer the questions. With this budget itself, how many new staff people are we putting in place?
So through you, Madam Speaker, in total, on the operating side, which is for service delivery, it's an overall increase of 221.7 positions, and for capital project delivery, it's another 242 positions.
So the 221 that I asked about earlier was just a fragment of this. We're now looking at almost 500 new staff people?
Through you, Madam Speaker, the one is ongoing permanent, which are for service delivery. The others come and go, the temporary capital project positions come and go as a project starts and ends. So they're not quite the same comparison.
How many of them are actually union positions?
I wouldn't have that information, Counselor.
Well, I was told earlier that they were grassroots positions.
They're mostly frontline, and to the...
So if they're frontline, are they union positions?
One can assume that most of them are.
And what are the wages that we're paying these particular new positions?
They would vary as, in some cases, we are talking about new lifeguard positions that have been transferred to parks, in other case, it's firefighters for the opening of a new fire station, enforcement operators.
How many new managers are we hiring or supervisors?
I wouldn't have that breakdown.
We don't know?
I have the total number of positions, I don't have the breakdown by union affiliation or whether it's management, non-union.
We don't know how many managers we're hiring?
Overall, these are mostly frontline.
I'll stand down because I'd like to know how many managers we're actually hiring in the city of Toronto with this budget, Madam Speaker. I'll stand my time down for that information to come forward.
Okay, so you've got three minutes. Counselor Burnside.
Thank you. Through you to the Fire Department, Toronto Fire Service. About your service on Toronto Island, what's your budget for the island, Fire Service?
Madam Speaker, operating staffing costs for the island are approximately $2.7 million per year.
$2.7 million per year, and you have how many calls in 2016?
There were 171 emergency incidents in 2016.
But most of those calls, if I'm not mistaken, were in the summer months, correct?
That's correct, Counselor. 65% of the total call volume occurs between the period of June through September.
Okay, so we spoke earlier, and if we take the six months when all the, when Centerville and the yacht clubs are closed, we went through some calculations, and they get about one call every four days, is that correct? In the off-season, those six months?
On average, for the, for the non-peak, that's correct, Counselor.
And if we took half of that budget of 2.7, so for those six months, the budget's 1.35 million. There are 20 firefighters assigned to the island today, rotating crew, correct?
That is, that's correct.
There's consistent all year.
Yeah, five firefighters assigned at any given point in time for a total of 20.
What's the average cost per call in the citywide? If I told you it was $268, does that make sense?
I'd have to do the math, Counselor, I'm sorry, I haven't calculated that.
Okay. If I told you that the average call in the off-season on the island was $29,000, would that surprise you?
That sounds about right, Counselor, for the, for the period you described, so the non-peak period.
Right. So the cost for those six months, and I know you actually break ice, I think, three times a day, we're not even including that, the average, the cost is 1.35 million for those six months. If I told you we only collected $360,000 in taxes all year round for those residents, would that surprise you?
I, I'm sorry, Counselor, I have no, I don't know about the tax collection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anci.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, I've got a question for the police services.
Okay, if we can have somebody from police services come down? I put your time on hold.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, through you, Madam Speaker. I'm trying to understand the, and I'm using the example of my own division, 43 Division in Scarborough, I'm trying to understand the modeling for speed enforcement, traffic enforcement. I understand of 43 Division, they have one officer that's dedicated to traffic enforcement in school zones and Minnesota stops at intersections and that. He does it on a complaint basis, on a, he's got a schedule that he follows. Is that what, is that what, is that what's done at every division right across the city? Or is there a model, or how does that work?
Right now, that's probably what's happening right across the city, but we are looking at the whole traffic enforcement program, much the same as the community and neighborhood. There will be a plan that's probably going to be presented to the chief in command in May or June of this year that will certainly ensure that resources are spread right across the city to cover some of the high-risk areas and areas where we're getting perhaps more complaints than other areas. So it'll be a whole-of-service sort of approach, as opposed to just having officers in one area and waiting. It'll be risk-based and based on where we're noticing there's a lot of problems.
Okay. And that follows up on, so as part of this process, I've been trying to figure this out during the budget processor ramp-up to it, one of the police board members sent an email last year and asked about concerns. I raised this very specific concern, and I was told that on a slow day, officers would move from another division to cover, cover that off when they had a slow day. And when I asked frontline officers in 43 Division about that, they said that never happens. It looks nice on paper, but it never happens.
That's going to happen because that's the whole-of-service approach that we're using, so that people are not constrained by boundaries on a page, that they'll be responding to where we need them the most, and that's really what the district model is all about.
Those solid lines will become dotted lines.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll start off with Parks, Forestry, and Recreation. Recently, we announced the additional capacity of 20,000, 20,000 new spaces to eat away at our waitlist. Just want to confirm that that is embedded in this budget, and you'll be able to meet those goals in 2018?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that is embedded in the budget and was added during the budget review process.
Right. So we seem to be hitting record participation visits. Your analyst notes are up to 10.8 million now.
Through you, Madam Speaker, that's correct, and when it comes to instructional programs, which is where the additional 20,000 spaces will be, we currently have over 620,000 registrations in instructional programs, and as noted earlier, almost 200,000 on the waiting list.
So we've got a small increased staff complement to help with that. How are we doing on the booking tool? We announced at the Regent Park Aquatic Centre that we had brought in some tech people to help families book with ease. How are we doing on that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we're trying to address that on two fronts. We've done some interim improvements based on the technology that we have now, that we've gotten some very positive feedback, that has increased the speed at which people are able to register, and we've also embarked on RFP to replace the system altogether, which is currently in review process, and we'll be coming forward with our recommendations in June.
Sounds great. Now, youth spaces, IC 11 in the budget expansion, is that...
Through you, Madam Speaker, youth spaces insofar as...
They would be embedded in various rec centers or...
Right, the existing youth program that we have is embedded into the budget, that's correct. There's also some expansion of youth spaces and youth hubs through the Toronto Library budget as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next set of questions are for children's services. Growth strategy on capital, 2019, 2027, is about $21 million, is that...
For capital?
Capital.
It's actually about $1.6 billion in capital over the 10 years.
And how many new centers will that...
It's 30,000 new spaces, so it would be several thousand new centers.
And are we on track for a 40% to 50% subsidization rate?
As we grow the capital, yes, we are on track to continue to subsidize 40% to 50% of the existing system and the system as it grows.
Now, we also get spaces, childcare spaces, from the private sector through Section 37 agreements. Is that factored into the capacities that you're referring to? In other words, if we have a developer build a daycare, that is not a part of your capital plan, that is a third-party build-out?
Yes, but we do factor all of that into our numbers.
And also faith-based capacity building, as well as home-based, do we factor that as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Now, we've been asking the provincial and federal government to pay a greater share of our daycare costs over the years. Numbers indicate that they have been coming to the table.
They have, especially commencing in 2017, where they both made a major investment to grow the system and to address affordability.
So if they pay more, then wouldn't it be natural that our percentage would shrink a little bit, based on just simple mathematics? If someone is contributing more, coming to the table with more...
Based on our simple, based on simple mathematics, yes, there is no required cost-sharing for the growth resources, but we do get a utilization component of funding that is based on what the city invests over and above its minimum cost-share requirements.
So based on what's before us, we're going to see more spaces and more subsidies than in Toronto's history. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question is for TCH. TCH, great. Sheila. Rumor has it, there's about 600 units or apartments that are uninhabitable. Is that, is that figure correct, or is that just a rumor?
That was the number that we had presented to Council, yes.
And is there a plan to rehabilitate them through SHAPE funding?
So we are prioritizing capital to get those units back in service, but not through SHAPE funding, through other capital funding that the city and others are providing.
Is there, is there a plan to get those back on the marketplace?
With the exception of FER growth, yes, there is.
Okay. Last set of questions, very quickly, with shelters, Council and Community Development and Recreation have passed dozens of motions to create a strategic roadmap to fix our shelter system, not that there's anything overly wrong with it, you inherited a system that had problems. Are you able to meet all the deadlines embedded in those motions? And that's... in those motions and that strategic plan, and come back to council, let's say, in the first quarter with, with, uh, with a plan going forward?
Okay, that was your last question.
Uh, through the Chair, we are bringing back a significant report on February 28th to CDRC. Um, also with the briefing note that's before you today related to the 1,000 shelter beds, 11 sites, and the 700 respite, um, beds. There is a three-year plan in place there, and we believe, uh, that we'll be able to meet those targets.
Thank you. Councillor Perks?
Thank you. Uh, to affordable housing staff? Thank you, Mr. Gaden. Um, we had a report at the Tenant Issues Committee on Friday, and, uh, the, the staff who worked on it weren't here, but what they had done is look at the rental market by different segment. Uh, you know, the, the above, the above-average, the average, and they had a segment that was, uh, uh, people in shared accommodation and dwelling rooms. And they found that the price of rental there is increasing considerably. Does that fit your experience?
Uh, that's our experience through the Chair.
Also, uh, we got, uh, told by, by staff, I'm not sure if it was from your office or TCHC, that the amount of income that someone gets, say, if they're, uh, on Ontario Works or some other form of social assistance, isn't enough to cover that rent. Is that your experience as well?
Through the Chair, that is our experience, that it's very challenging for persons on social assistance to compete in the private market.
Further, we were told that, um, even if the city donated land and waived all fees and charges for new construction, uh, the private market cannot construct, uh, such that we, we could even cover, they could even cover the carrying costs at the kind of rents that people on social assistance are paying. Is that your experience as well?
Through the Chair, uh, councillor, the private market will construct it, but the subsidies that they require are much deeper.
So it would require public subsidy to provide housing to people in that segment of the rental market to find housing at all?
That's correct.
And, um, I believe in answer to a question that you, uh, that I posed to you during the Airbnb debate, rental units in that segment of the market are disappearing faster than they're being built, uh, because of development pressures and other pressures right now. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, yes, that is correct, councillor.
So, in summary, we're losing units in that segment of the market. The private sector cannot build for that segment of the market unless there's additional public subsidy, and, uh, there, and, and people are losing units in that segment of the market because of development pressures. That's all correct?
Through the Chair, yes, that is correct, councillor.
So effectively, if you are at the bottom end of the rental market right now, you risk being evicted. Uh, many of those units are not covered under our rental retention bylaw, and no new unit is being built, uh, for you to be housed in.
Uh, through the Chair, there are some housing units-
Oh, sorry.
There are some-
We're losing them faster than they're, they're disappearing.
But there is some housing production that's occurring, particularly within partnership with the federal and provincial governments. Um, and, uh, we are looking at, and we have strategies to prevent people from losing their homes as well, such as the Rent Bank and also Housing Help Centers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Desseaux?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My question's up to Parks. Could you explain to us, please, um, what the Parks Ambassador program is, and why a briefing note was requested for us to enhance the program?
So, through you, Madam Speaker, the Parks Ambassador program is a program that's been around for several years. Uh, it's a mobile crew of Parks staff who go from park to park, and, uh, through either recommendations or, uh, reportings from staff and the public, uh, will, um, look at park encampments, uh, and various other uses of parks that may impede public access into them.
So, right now, um, I believe we have one full-time person who covers 44 wards?
So, through you, Madam Speaker, currently, the current budget provides for one full-time year-round Parks Ambassador, as well as in the summer, one six-month seasonal, uh, Parks Ambassador. Through, uh, we were requested to look at what, uh, additional service levels in this area might look like, and staff outlined in a, in a report to the Parks and Environment Committee, uh, you know, uh, an expansion of the program that could include an additional, one full-time staff, as well as an additional three, uh, seasonal staff, so that we would go from two crews, one crew in the summer to three crews.
Now, my understanding is that this program was started in the downtown core several years ago. Um, would you agree that this program's now needed in other parts of a city, not just in the downtown wards?
So, through you, Madam Speaker, uh, predominantly, the, the number of interactions are downtown, but as the report outlines and the briefing note outlines, there has been, uh, over the last few years, an increase in the amount of, uh, referrals to, uh, Parks Ambassadors in other areas of the city as well.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate this.
Thank you. Councillor Matlow?
Madam Speaker, through you, uh, perhaps to the City Manager. Uh, do we as of yet have, aside from the preliminary work that's being done on the relief subway line, do we have any capital, city capital dollars directly allocated to, uh, building that project?
Yes, we do. Uh, we have capital dollars associated with the planning and design work in TTC, and we have some dollars that are associated with the work that the staff are doing on the TPAP.
Uh, with all due respect, I said, aside from the preliminary work that's being done, do we have city capital dollars allocated to building that line?
Madam Speaker, no, not as yet. Uh, that money has not been identified, uh, and we're looking for both provincial and federal dollars, as instructed by council previously in March.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying your answer. Um, how about the, uh, how about the Eglington East, uh, extension, the LRT to UFT Scarborough? Do we have any capital dollars allocated to that project, as of today?
Through the Speaker, I'll, uh, I'll answer that. We have capital dollars to take us to 5% design, but we do not have, uh, capital dollars beyond that for construction, yeah.
Thank you. So, again, aside from preliminary work, we don't actually have capital dollars allocated from the city to build it. Uh, what are, what about, uh, the waterfront LRT? We had a, had a, an important conversation about that the other day. Do we have city capital dollars allocated to that project?
Madam Speaker, we have some capital dollars in the, both the, the city planning and in the TTC budget for a portion of the waterfront, uh, extension from the exhibition place to Duffering Gate part of the project.
But not the entirety?
But otherwise, the money that we need would have to come from additional city dollars, federal and provincial dollars, looking for, for some grants.
Yeah. The roughly 181,000 people who are on the waiting list for, uh, social housing. Uh, do we have, uh, any clear idea of where the capital dollars will come from to create more social housing? And when I say more, I mean enough.
Through the Chair, so, um, there is significant capital funds, uh, going into TCHC this year. Um, in terms of new social housing, uh, there is not capital funds to build new social housing.
So... Put the politics here, and let's just put the math right here. If we don't have enough money, we don't have money to build the relief line when we've got people stuffed in like sardines on, and on dangerous platforms every morning rush hour, or afternoon rush hour. We don't have money for the promised Eglington crosstown, the east LRT. Uh, we don't have enough money for the waterfront LRT. We don't have enough money to build social housing to support all those people waiting. And I've just named actually some of the, probably the most high-profile capital commitments that we've made. There's 30 to 40 billion dollars.
Councillor Matlow, what is your question?
My question is this. Would staff support us moving forward with a conversation with the province to allow for a more substantial revenue source to work together to cover those commitments, beyond what we have today?
Staff have been consistently clear that, um, council will, uh, at some point need to choose a, a path, and it will either be a smaller government path that's consistent with its current revenue, uh, uh, capacity, or it will, uh, meet its existing service levels and require modest levels of, of revenue increase, or it will be to fulfill the myriad city-building commitments, including the ones you, uh, indicated before. If we are going to meet that, that set of commitments, then we will require significant investment provincially, federally, and again, yes, likely from city sources. And of course, staff would, would, uh, support a broader expl, uh, a broader exploration of potential increases in our revenue capacity.
And if we are going to be asking the federal government and the provincial government for more capital dollars, would it be helpful to have more dollars in our, in our city building fund, to be able to provide matching funds, to be able to incent those dollars?
Generally speaking, the, the other governments will look closely at what we've done with our existing allocation, and want to know if we've used fully or maximized our existing revenue potential before entertaining much of a dialogue around future revenue tools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have two lines of questions. The first, the CFO, the second will be TTC, so I'll just give them a heads-up. I'll leave them at the microphone. Um, earlier in the debate, I think the number, if we could just confirm through the CFO, the number that I had heard regarding the municipal land transfer tax with respect to the assignment of capital projects, was that $40 million?
Yes, we set aside, uh, 40 million from the land transfer tax towards capital.
Do we have a formal policy on that, or is that sort of the way that it's evolved? And it's, we got about 5%?
In fact, uh, that was, uh, what, what council adopted the last two budgets.
Is, uh, would I be fair to classify, uh, capital work as somewhat elastic, in that we gotta get it done, but if it's not done this year, it can slide into the next year, which in turn creates a little bit of fluidity with our need for the MLTT money?
Certainly, our capital program could, um, is flexible.
Do you think it'd be prudent to think about, um, a percentage policy or changing that ratio? Uh, given some of the concerns of council members about the future stability of the MLTT, do you think maybe as a council, we should visit that policy and see if there might be a better way to match spending in, and how we apply the revenue from the MLTT to our operating and capital budgets?
I think that's certainly a consideration, and I believe the City Manager will be reporting out on a long-term fiscal plan, and, uh, certainly that will include revisiting on, of the allocation of MLTT revenue.
Thank you. Um, over to the TTC. I'm, I'm curious a little bit about, um, some of the ridership forecasts when it comes to the two-hour fare-pass system. So, specifically, we talked about, uh, 4% of existing non-pass paid, paid rides as ones that might take advantage of a two-hour window. Can someone describe to me how that forecast came about?
Through you, Madam Speaker. So there was a review of some of the data that we would have coming through our Presto rides, in terms of taps that we would have that would occur within the two-hour window, and we were able to extrapolate from that data, based on what our estimates are for Presto growth, in terms of what type of percentage increases we would get that would take advantage of that service.
So, what, what were the numbers? So, okay, what percentage of riders use Presto today, roughly?
Uh, by year-end, our number was roughly 18%.
18%. So of the 18%, what percent of those chained rides together, or you saw evidence that sparked, uh, some kind of demand, that people were paying that extra fare that might benefit from this system? What did you find in the Presto data? That, that's not in the briefing note here, that's why I'm curious.
Um, yeah, so essentially, that was the exact data that we used to determine the revenue loss, and that was the basis. It wasn't a projection, it was based on the actual trips that were occurring within the two-hour time, uh, window, that we would no longer be able to receive the revenue for those trips, and it was roughly around that 4% mark.
4%. So, the, the briefing note says that it was the Transportation Tomorrow survey that marked the 4%, but it, would it be fair to say that the Presto data accurately reflected that?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. Um, with respect to MetroPass holders, they enjoy this privilege today, and I guess the thinking is, is that we would change things around a little bit. Is there any concern that some MetroPass users will stop subscribing to the MetroPass system because they can find a better deal? I mean, transit riders, we, we usually figure out the shortest way from A to B and the cheapest way, too.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
So, there is, there is concern. Do we have any idea what that is? I didn't, I don't know if I saw that quantified in here, in terms of loss of MetroPass riders.
Through, through you, Madam Speaker, so there was, through you, Madam Speaker, so there was an analysis. So when we looked at the amount of MetroPass users that would convert, we factored that into the numbers that we provided. Um, I don't believe that it was a number that was, uh, substantial, considering the fact that we're looking at applying this only at those people that are on Presto.
Okay.
Um, the cost of this, I think, is $20 million on an annualized or an ongoing basis, 20, 20.1, 20.9, something like that. Um...
What is the cost, uh, what is the revenue gained by a modest fare increase? What was it in the, in the past? I think we raised 10 cents back in 2016, $2.90 to $3 cash, sorry, prepaid fare?
Um, I believe a 10 cent, roughly a 10 cent fare increase across all fare media would be roughly, I think it was ballpark 30, 35 million dollars.
30 to 35 million, that's 10 cents, and so we haven't had a fare increase since 2016, since that 10 cents?
Uh, there was a fare increase as part of the 2017 budget process, so it was not applied against the MetroPass.
It was on the MetroPass?
No, it was not.
That was your last question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, wasn't there somebody else there? Uh, yeah, just Councillor, Madam Lady, when they tell me they have the information, I'll... Councillor McMahon?
I thought there was another councillor on there.
I thought there was somebody else there.
Okay, so I just have some questions for you, Madam Speaker, about our climate change action plan. So, just, I think there's been some confusion, and, and I asked this in executive, but not everyone was there. So there's confusion with these numbers going around, so there was a 6.7 and now 2.5, and just if you could explain that, um, to us.
Thank you, councillor, and through, through the, the Speaker. So last year, um, we were asked to come up with a budget for Transform TO, and we had a, a three-year plan, 2017, 18 and 19, um, and the number for 2018 at that time was 6.7 million dollars. Um, and there were a number of assumptions built into that, and, you know, we're, we're a year later, um, and, um, and things, our assumptions have changed a little bit, but, um, just to work through it, um, last year, as you recall, council did approve, um, six staff as part of Transform TO. Um, when you, um, annualize them, that's a 723 million dol, 723,000 dollar, um, number, and that's in addition to the, the, the number we've asked for in 18, which is a number that you see in the budget of 2.547 million dollars. So that's 3.27 million dollars in 17 and 18. When you, um, annualize the 18 numbers, because we've got 10 staff we're proposing to be added in April, that's only nine months this year, and another 15 starting in July, that's only six months this year. There's another million dollars worth of cost that build up to the annualization, so we've got that. Um, the plan always was a three-year plan, um, so we had 10 staff in addition being, um, added in 2019 in April, so that's another $2 million, um, uh, next year, uh, for the 10 additional staff. In addition to that, um, there were some numbers that came off. We, um, there was a $350,000 element that was forecast, um, last year, but we took that out because we found other funding for it. Um, there were modifications to work programs that were presented last year. Um, we've, we've taken, uh, $50,000 out of that. So in total, that, that adds up to the 6.7 million dollars that we had proposed, um, a year ago.
And are you receiving funding from other sources?
Yep. One of the positions that we, um, received funding for last year was a, a position to basically do that, to go out and seek funding from other sources. So, since , um, we hired this individual, um, in Q3 of last year, we made application to the provincial, um, municipal challenge fund, which is monies that are being redirected into the marketplace, that were collected through the, the provincial cap and trade program. We, um, we applied for 29 projects, um, worth a collective $250 million, and out of that, the, the- We, we applied for 29 projects worth a collective $250 million, and out of that, the, the grant component that we've applied for is 110 million. So we've got that. We've received munding, we've received funding from FCM, we've received funding from the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, and from C40. So that's very active, and we're being pretty successful with that.
Okay. So at the end of the day, how many people will we have to shepherd through our Climate Action Change Plan?
So last year, when we submitted the plan, we had 52 people in the plan, and when we're finished next April, at this time next year, we will have 52 people.
And who do I send my resume to?
Ma, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we, Counselor Mamalidi has three more minutes, so do we have the answers for Counselor Mamalidi?
So through you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry we don't have that information at this point. I can say that most of them, the majority would be managed, would be non, would be unionized staff, supplemented by positions like analysts and other kinds of non-union staff, and very few that, that I am aware of, of any direct managers or supervisors. But unfortunately, I just don't have that, that data totally collected, as we still don't know what all the positions are until they're funded, and I just...
Madam Speaker.
Okay.
This, this is a public meeting, and I think the, the fact that this is the only opportunity I get to ask this question doesn't get relayed to the public. And, and I would imagine, well, this is an important part of the process, Counselor Fletcher, is, is for us to relay the information to people that are tuning in. It's a part of this process. It's called democracy. And so now, I, we're, I am not subject to ask questions about how many managers we're hiring. Maybe I, I can ask a question, and, and that is, if we're hiring managers, are we giving them cars? Are we negotiating contracts? And if so, is that a part of this budget? Is every manager that we're hiring going to get a car?
Well, Counselor Mamalidi, the staff don't have that information. They've said that.
But it's, but we're approving a budget.
Counselor Mamalidi.
And asking questions on that budget.
The staff do not have that...
And we're not answering the questions.
Yeah, well, they don't have the, the answer to that particular question.
But I am happy to answer the, the broader questions. We do have an understanding of the number of staff. We have a number of, an understanding that that brings us up to about even with the number of staff we were reduced by last year. So of the 55,000 staff totally involved with the City of Toronto, the number remains essentially the same as it was in 2016, so we're back to that point with the, the increases. And no, we are not giving the managers cars. Almost all of these are frontline staff. The reason we do not know the exact answers is because this is a very small incremental increase. It will be phased in, out of, in over the full course of the year. We haven't even classified these positions yet.
So let me just get this straight, then. We're hiring, we're hiring almost 500 people, and we don't know what positions they're going to be?
What we understand is the difference between the capital and the operating. We know where they will be going. We do not necessarily understand in all instances, on a base of over 50,000 positions, the exact details of them. We know that the vast majority of them will be frontline, and frankly, we're very proud of the very tight management we've brought to the overall FDE situation over the last number of years.
Okay, that's, that, your time is up. Thank you. Your time's up. Counselor Matlow to speak.
Madam Speaker, I have a motion. And my motion is to, once again, request that the province allow us the ability to have a share of the harmonized sales tax, and if not granted, granted, to be able to have our own. Either way, we don't have enough revenue to be able to cover all of the promises we've made. All the commitments we know are important, and to respond to all the needs that we know are out there. And we have two options. We can either show courage and do something that is admittedly controversial and difficult, but necessary, and finally, to be able to provide sufficient funding through the city building fund. And by the way, mind you, I just want to remind you, the current city building fund is estimated to be roughly $73 million a year over the next five, phased in by 2021. This, based on KPMG, could generate roughly 261, 262 million dollars a year, roughly a billion over the next four. That would give us a real start, especially if we match funds with other orders of government. So we have two options. Either respond to the fact that we have people every day squeezed in like sardines on our current subway system, in dangerous conditions on our platforms, dealing with unacceptable situations on our streetcar lines, in an overcrowded system. We have over 180,000 citizens, people in our city, who are currently waiting for a respectable place to live that they can afford. We have real life and death challenges, and we have real basic quality of life challenges. We also have people who complain to us every day. Each of you, each of you, hear about the standards for snow clearing. You hear about the standards for bylaw enforcement. You hear about, every single day, what about traffic enforcement in your neighborhoods? Do your, your residents believe that it's adequate? So if it's a specific local issue or a big-picture issue, people are saying that the standards we've set are not enough. So one option is, we move forward with the request for a sales tax, have courage, do the right thing, do what's honest, do what's true, do what's right, and be leaders. Now, there is another option. Let's just believe that the status quo is good enough and do nothing. Is that what you hear? I don't hear that. Do you, do you hear from your residents that they're happy with everything just the way it is? I don't hear that. So you can, well, I guess there's a third option. You could be a politician who gets up dishonestly, pretends to just freeze all taxes, do nothing, and also complain about the standards of our services. But we wouldn't do that, would we? So I think there's only one option if we're going to be leaders. Request what we know we need. By the way, I told you that it might be controversial or radical. It's actually, we're the exception to the rule. We are an anomaly in Toronto. We always talk about wanting to be a world-class city. Why can't we be like New York? Why can't we have a transit system like New York? Guess what? They don't just have a sales tax, they've got a long list of taxes.
And an income tax.
And an income tax.
Yeah.
God, why can't we be like Los Angeles? They got one, too. Why can't we be like London? They've got a value-added tax. Why can't we be like Buffalo? They've got one. I mean, seriously? Like, the things we get all nervous about politically, oh my gosh, what if I do this? Somebody's going to scream at me. You know what they should be screaming us about? We have this amazing opportunity to be elected. We are elected to represent people, and we've got this moment in life, whether it be four years or a few more years, for some, but we have this moment in our lives that we can actually make a tangible difference in people's lives. If you care about snow clearing, well, let's raise the standards. You want accessible sidewalks? Let's get them plowed. Let's get them shoveled. If you actually care about housing, if you actually care about these people who are in desperate situations, do something about it. Don't just say it's bad. Let's actually do something about raising the revenue that we need to address that issue. What about your residents who, who do rely on transit every single day? Who cannot, right now, predict what time they're going to get to work, what time they're going, going to get to school, and they're on dangerous platforms, squeezed out? What are you going to do about them? Are you just going to huff and puff and say it's awful? Or are you going to put your vote where your mouth is?
Thank you, Counselor Matlow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll recess to 6:30.